This is a regular board meeting of the Silver Consolidated School District Board of Education. Today is Monday, February 25th, 2019. The time is 6:06 PM. Mrs. Hernandez, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Dr. Diaz?
Here.
And Mr. Flores.
Again, Mr. Flores had mentioned to me last week that he couldn't be here for the meeting tonight. Welcome, everybody, members of the board, members of administration, guests. If you all will join me in standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and then New Mexico flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
First on our agenda this evening is a review and approval of the minutes from our January 21st, 2019, regular meeting and our work session. I will entertain, and I think all members of the board received those in our board packet, and does anybody have any changes to those or edits, revisions to those minutes? Everybody has had a chance to review those. Very well, entertain a motion to approve our minutes from our work session and our regular meeting.
Aye, so moved.
Of a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you all. Next on our agenda this evening is recognition of a coach in our district, Mr. Dwayne Truon. If Mr. Truon would step forward, please. Thank you for being here, Mr. Truon. Thank you for the team, your coaches, your family, all being here. We wanted to recognize you for being awarded or the recognition from the National Federation of High School Coaches, the Southwest Coach of the Year. So, thank you for being here. I've got a few statements that I want to read. And first, I'll say that Section 6, which is the Southwest section, includes New Mexico, Arkansas, Colorado, Oklahoma, and Texas. So, that's a very, I think, a very proud accomplishment for being Coach of the Year in softball for that region. And there were a few items I'd like to, that were given to me and compiled by folks that wanted to recognize you tonight, and so I'll read those. Highlights of a blessed life and career in education and coaching. Dwayne David Truon, born and raised in Silver City. Graduated Silver High in 1988. Proud product of Silver Consolidated Schools, a multi-sport athlete throughout high school, football, basketball, and track. Attended Western New Mexico University, transferred to New Mexico State. That's all right, I won't hold that against you. Returned to Western New Mexico, graduated in the fall of '93 with a double major in K-12 PE and elementary education. Married to the most beautiful woman in the world in the summer of 1994. I believe she's here. First three years of teaching were in Deming as a seventh-grade science teacher. Returned home to teach PE at La Plata Middle School and coach high school football from '97 to 2010. Defensive coordinator for the state champion 2005 team. Assistant softball coach from 1999 to 2003. Moved to high school to teach PE and took the head softball coaching job in '03 and '04. 2007, son Ryan was born, a little over a year later, and 2008, daughter Ava was born. Back there as well, welcome. Graduated in 2012 with a master's in educational leadership with a 4.0 GPA. Coached in seven state championships as an assistant coach for both football, 1-2, and softball, '0 through '04. Coached in nine state championships as a head softball coach. New Mexico All-Star South head coach for 2006 and 2010. And when he's not on the field, he enjoys camping, fishing, hunting, and spending time with family. So, we've got a certificate that we want to present to you and take some pictures with you, the team, family, whoever you all want to take pictures with, but want to say congratulations again. Thank you for all your work on the softball field and in the classroom. And I'll open it up real quick to the members of the board and administration if they have comments before we take pictures.
Yeah, I think we all just want to thank you for going above and beyond what it is to be a teacher, to also go out into the field and teach kids what it's like to be a team member, to work together and to be successful. And I think all of these students, some of them you've probably had four or five years there, probably can attest to the fact that they've probably learned more on the field than they'll ever learn in the classroom. So, we really appreciate you.
The Silver District, we're just very lucky to have you with us. Out in the community, I hear nothing but good news, good everything about the softball team. Just kudos to you and good job and just keep up the good work.
Well, it's good. They only print the good stuff. Okay, okay, great. Dwayne, I've known you and Coach Truon a really, really long time and definitely long enough to know what a good man and good teacher and a good coach you are, and I am just glad you're being recognized. So, congratulations to you and your family.
Well, let me start off by saying thank you for the recognition. It means a lot. I mean, you didn't have to do this, and I really do appreciate it. And on behalf of my current team and all the teams that came before, my coaches, my family, it's been truly a team effort all the way around to put myself and our school in this position, and I've been very fortunate. So, last time I was in this boardroom, it wasn't such a good meeting. I had reservations of coming in here tonight because I wasn't sure.
PTSD.
But at any rate, I thank you for believing in me and thank you for the opportunity to work in such quality facility and with such quality people. And from the bottom of my heart, I mean, I want to thank everybody who made it possible for me to chase the dream and achieve what I have so far, but we're not done.
I think a big round of applause is in.
And I forgot, we've got cake. We've got cake, so we've got to cut the cake. But first, before we do that, let's present you with this certificate from the board and then take some pictures.
Inhale.
Even though you're all sweaty and smelling and practice and getting, it won't make a difference in the vote.
It won't be a scratch to see.
Anyway, you don't have to worry about that.
Entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving our agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is information and presentations. And first up is Cuddy and McCarthy for an update on our SB 9 election, which will be coming up in May. And we're going to call them and put them on speakerphone. This is Mike McMillan with the Silver Consolidated School Board.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you doing? I've got you on speakerphone, and we're in our regular meeting.
Great, good evening, everyone.
And we're on that topic of discussion, the SB 9 election.
Right.
Do you have some information to present to the board?
Well, I'm not sure. I know we had sent down, I had spoken with Ms. McMillan a few weeks ago, and we had prepared a number of documents for the board to consider if it wanted to have an election this spring. And I think we were, in the documents we prepared, we had prepared them for a May 14th election. Now, that election would be under the current law, which requires that if you are to have an SB 9 election now, it would be a special election, which of course means it would be an all-mail-in ballot election. And I don't know if any of you were present at the New Mexico School Boards Association's Board Member Institute at the end of last week and on Saturday, but one of my partners and I presented on the proposed legislation that is making its way through the legislature this year that would allow school districts that are in a position like yours, meaning that their SB 9 taxes were run out, ran out at the end of 2018, to actually hold your SB 9 tax election at the same time as the regular election, which is going to be taking place on November 5th of this year. So, if that legislation passes, that would also be an option for you all to consider. So, it's really a matter of deciding, well, and quite frankly, I guess you could do both. You could hold a special election under the current law, and if the new legislation passes and if your special election is not successful, you would have another bite at the apple because you could include the tax question on your November ballot as well.
I don't think any of us were at that meeting, so that's interesting. I had not heard of that proposed legislation.
Right. It is House Bill 407, and I did send Ms. McCain a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that we put on. Now, again, it is proposed legislation. You know, whether it passes or not, I cannot tell you. None of us has a crystal ball, so we don't know. We have been told that, you know, it has the support, of course, of the Senator Daniel Ivy Soto, who was the one who drafted the prior legislation that changed the way we do school elections. And so, of course, he is kind of the mastermind, if you will, behind this newest piece of legislation. And when we had spoken with him, what he told us was that this election, this new election law, was meant to fix some of the problems in the election law that passed last year. And one of those fixes, again, is that you would be able to have your SB 9 or an HB 33 tax election, or even a bond election if you wanted to, during the November 5th regular election, which is going to be coming up. And just so you remember, under the current law and the proposed legislation would not change this, every school district in the state has to have their board member elections on November 5th of 2019. So, you're going to be having an election no matter what. It's just all now part of this statewide, regular, local election. So, if this legislation passes, what would change is that now you could tack on the SB 9 election if you wanted to. Now, let me just back up a little bit too and say that you may know that a lot of school districts have already called special elections for their SB 9 and/or HB 33 taxes, and that was mostly because they find themselves in a position where last year was their last tax year, and they believe that they could not run the district without those monies. I don't know how much you all receive in SB 9 taxes, but those other school districts felt that it was of such urgency that they did have to have these special elections. The majority of them were successful. Most of them had them on February 5th, but there were some who have had them and they were not successful. I think of the, like, 22 districts that we helped with elections, either four or five were not successful. And some of those school districts are thinking about holding yet another special election and/or waiting until November to see if this legislation passes.
Okay. We do have a copy of, I think, the PowerPoint slide, and then there is a timeline that we have received as well with the, I think, intention to move forward with the May 14th special election.
Right. And just a couple of things that you should know about a special election. As I said, it is an all-mail-in ballot, and of course, the school district is responsible for all the costs of the election. Now, that means that you will have to pay for the printing of the ballot, and you will have to pay for all the postage for having the ballots delivered to every registered voter in the district. You will also pay postage only for those ballots that are actually returned. So, it's not like you have to pay, you know, two stamps essentially per registered voter. It's definitely one stamp to get it out to them, and then only the postage for those that are returned. We did, we have been told that in the districts that it is running approximately two times what the regular elections used to cost. So, for example, if your elections under the old law used to cost you about $10,000 total, you could expect to pay about $20,000 now. And then, let's see, what else did I want to tell you about special elections? You know, it is, again, all mail-in. The thing that is most critical is your ability to educate your voters about these elections. Some of the districts have surprised everyone because they are in areas where a lot of people didn't think that the voters would support the SB 9. But I think where it has happened, the school boards and the school districts have been very aggressive about getting word out as to the fact that the tax is not a new tax, that it is just a continuation of the old tax, and so that the tax rate itself is not going to be going up. And they've been educating them about how critical the need for this money is, explaining to them that, you know, how much money they stand to lose if they don't win this election. And I say that cautioning you that you cannot tell, reminding you actually, that you cannot tell voters how to vote. You could tell them that they, what the election is, you could give them all the information, what the purpose of the election is, what the money will be used for, et cetera, et cetera. You just can't say, "Vote yes," or tell them to vote yes. And so, again, the districts that have really gone out there and educated and told them what the money will be used for, how much they stand to lose if they don't get the election that's passed, et cetera, et cetera, those are the ones that we have found to have been the most successful. And that also means getting your community boards and community members involved. You know, if there are leaders in the community, newspaper publishers, bank presidents, Chamber of Commerce, anybody in the media, any of the community leaders that, you know, might step up to the plate and help you get word out, that would be very, very helpful, especially if, you know, you might be in one of those districts where people are, I know everybody's averse to taxes, but some seem to be worse so than others.
Couple of questions for you, and I'll certainly open it up to other questions as well from others, but if HB 407 passes, we can push this back to the November election, which we will be participating in. Do we share a cost in that election?
Yes. Everyone, well, for the local, if that passes, the costs are basically going to be borne by the state. If there, if your question requires an additional ballot page, then that's what you will have to pay for.
Okay. And if we held it in March, then we would be 100% responsible for the mailing and printing and?
Correct.
Other questions from the board or administration?
I just have a question. If HB 407 does not pass, and we elect to just forego this May election, hoping that this is going to pass, and we go just to the general, and it doesn't, then have we lost out on our chance to have an election?
Under the current law, if HB 407 doesn't pass, you have until, the board has until May 15th to adopt a resolution calling for a special election. So, you could wait and see what happens with this legislation. I think there's at least, I think, I know we're halfway through the legislative session. I think it ends probably like March 22nd or something like that. So, you know, the day that it ends, we're going to know whether it passed or not, and then I think the, I can't remember if the governor has 10 or 20 days to pass legislation, so that puts us into the middle of April. So, you would have until, you know, you would know whether it passed and whether the governor signed it and whether it is going into law. So, that would probably give you about another month or maybe a little over a month to adopt a resolution calling for a special election.
Okay. And I see it looks, I just looked up, April 5th is the last day that legislation can be acted on by the governor, or it's?
Okay, well, that's good to know. So, if that's the last day, then you would have a month and 10 days, again, until May 15th, for the board to adopt the resolution.
Other questions from the board?
When does, when is this up? When is our current?
This fiscal year.
So, it would be?
The end of 19, at the end, like, June of 19.
Right. The budget that we have in place is the last budget until we get it renewed.
We would lose out on would be?
$1.1 million.
Thank you.
For maintenance of the schools.
Okay.
So, with doing the vote now, if we go, you know, do the special vote, and for some god-awful reason it didn't pass, we would still have the option to do it in November. If we just push all of our eggs into one basket, then we're going to have to hope that everything goes in November. So, that's why I was looking at the special election to?
The cost of that is cheaper than losing out on 1.1 million.
Right. Because that's what we use to maintain our school's properties. Pardon me?
Do you know what the election usually costs us?
No, I don't, not offhand.
And can I just jump in here? Can I hear a little bit about that? And that's kind of the rationale that the other boards have used. Do you all know how much money you receive from the SB 9 taxes?
Is it 1.1 million?
Yes.
Yeah, if it's over a million. I think that most I have heard, one of our school districts, and it would be a school district that's, I believe, bigger than yours, I believe that their election ran about $40,000. And I know they were receiving just over $1 million as well. And again, they decided to go forward with it. Now, theirs is lost, but what you were saying is, again, you've got, if you wait until November, and I'm not telling you that you should, but I'm just saying you should or you should not, but if you were to wait until November, that is your last chance to receive taxes for this year. You will have foregone the 1.1 million for 2019. You will be able to go out in 2020 and get, and see if you can receive taxes for that year, but you can't, you won't be able to for 2019. That will be gone.
Other questions from the board or administration?
No, sir.
So, I just want to clarify, the 1.1 million you stated is that's what we would lose for May to the November election or?
That's what we'd lose for the next school year.
Okay.
And those funds are used to maintain the facilities for all, you know, the baseball fields, the school properties, everything, you know. Barry uses, that's his maintenance budget and technology.
Yeah, yeah, totally. Okay.
Any other questions?
And it cannot use, you cannot use bond funds to substitute in that place. It would have to come out of the operational budget.
Operational budget.
For technology and for?
The 1.1 million.
I think that's all the questions. Mrs. Ives, I appreciate you taking the call in the evening and?
Absolutely. It would be helpful, I'm happy to give you my cell phone number if you think of any other questions later this evening. And certainly, you all know how to get ahold of me, so I'm happy to provide you with additional information whenever you need it.
Okay. Let me grab you our speakerphone so we don't broadcast that to everybody.
It's all Silver City.
Okay, got it. Yep. All right. Appreciate your time again. Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Potts, for giving that phone call setup for us. Next on our agenda this evening under program and presentations is Mr. David Hogen, the truancy attendant, success initiative student of the month. Welcome.
Hello. I spoke with you guys by the end of the year, last year, I believe, so I can give you a little bit of an update of what's going on. ASI is formerly known as truancy. They kind of changed our job descriptions to kind of fit what the PEDs kind of wanting to see in this next couple of years, as far as we can tell. I put a, I gave you guys, you should have a copy of this, it's like a, kind of like a sheet of what's going on, give you the definition of what the ASI is. Basically, we're following the federal guidelines for kind of making sure students stay in school. So, that's kind of what we're doing right now with that, following the guidelines. We are grant-funded the ASI program right now. There's two coaches, myself and Valerie. Um, we are grant funded the ASI program right now. There's two coaches, um, myself and Valerie, um, Lotis. She couldn't be here this afternoon. Um, but, um, we're, um, we have a director from the PED that kinda facilitates our grant and kinda tells us what they want, what, what they don't want. And, uh, when we petitioned for the grant or we applied for the grant, we actually had to meet certain criterias. And they actually, we were one of the first schools that they came down to. They actually saw the site. It was called a site visit. They went through all of our program. They went to our offices. They went to our schools. Spoke with, uh, basically, they wanted to see what we were doing, if we were doing everything right. Um, a couple of months after that, I got a call back from the deputy director over there. And she said, "We're, we're, we're, we're basically an ideal school for a lot of the way that, how they want it to look, what they want other schools to look like. We're doing it now." So it was, it was nice. It was nice to get that. Um, I guess, um, some of you guys were curious to what the ASI was. And I've been working with Mr. Potts on, um, I got a webpage now, um, just for SI that's, that's on ASI, that's on the school website. Um, we're still working on it. We wanna move it to a better location towards more, um, more, um, easier to access. We do provide a lot of links to outside programs, um, mental health, sexual assault, food pantries and stuff like that. And since we're still kinda tinkering with it, we don't really wanna put it up in the limelight. We're, we're closed, but we're not done yet. I'd like to see this, this thing go full steam next school year. Um, since we're always trying to improve and we've, we've already satisfied what our grant's asking for, we're trying to improve in that. And I, um, worked with, uh, Mr. Potts, uh, getting, uh, ASI student of the month on the Facebook page. So we're doing it real small right now. We're not trying to do the whole school because number one, money's an issue. And then number two, we're still trying to beta test everything to make sure it's gonna look right and make sure, you know, we're hitting the, the marks that we want. Um, if you go to the website, you can see our, not our current one, but the first one that we put on there. And it gives a little brief description of the student. The schools pick them. We get an idea of, you know, what they're doing, why they're, why, why they have good attendance, what makes them, what makes school important to them. So we wanna make sure that, you know, um, but our program that's different from most of them is you don't have to be in sports. You don't have to be, uh, super smart. You just have to show up and do your best. And a lot of programs, and I'm not taking away from any of the programs, athletics or otherwise, but this is one program that everybody can participate in. You don't have to be special. All you have to do is show up and do your best. So, um, we had kids that, we did a 30-day kickoff at the Silver High recently and, um, we pulled a bunch of names. We didn't have enough for everybody, but we randomly pulled kids. I pulled their grades. And what we, what we were looking at in the beginning shows that the kids that are showing up for the first 30 days are, most of the kids were As and Bs. Now, we did have a couple of kids that were, you know, CD average, but we didn't take that gift card or whatever they got away from them because that wasn't the point. So that's, like I said, that's why we're kinda unique in a, a lot of senses. It's just for everybody. Um, and part of the, I don't know if you guys got the photographs. Um, part of the photographs, just to touch base on our program, we, um, we did turkey baskets, actually ham baskets for Christmas. I worked with Bianca Padilla, getting some money from a J.J. Grant. And, um, we ended up with about $1,400 to buy, um, Christmas hats for probably over 80%, 80, 80 families in Silver District. I mean, Cobra got a couple of, of for their district also. But I have kind of connections with law enforcement because of my prior career. So I asked them if they wanted to participate with us and they jumped all over it. Um, kinda working with the guys, I worked, I worked well with Chief Ortiz and I worked well with Frank Gomez. Um, and to be honest with you, I don't think I had anything to do with me being in law enforcement. They saw the opportunity to give back and they got on it. So I don't think this was so much because I was a cop at one time. I think they really wanted to do it, otherwise they wouldn't have. Um, that top pitchers, LaDon, that was our first kid for the ASI student of the month. Um, he got a gift card for $25, I think. Um, this is the La Plata Middle School where they did a 30-day kickoff. That's not all the kids. That's just some of the ones that we can wrangle up afterwards. Um, the bottom one, we actually, um, we had to keep it under five. And I reached out to local communities. I also reached out with Bianca Padilla for, um, NMSU. They actually gave us, uh, um, they invited five kids to go watch the homecoming game for free. So we got, we were able to kinda let the school pick the, the kids out. And we got them certificates and everything to go to, to go to the game, which was kinda neat. The kids liked it. Um, the bottom part of it, that's the, I don't wanna say OG, but that's the original group that started the ASI. We've seen some changes because some people got promoted and, who we said, I went to Border Patrol. So we don't, we're not gonna probably see her very much anymore. Maybe at a checkpoint, but that's... Here's our dare lines. We, we did was we had the dare lines go to all of our elementary schools. Um, um, Frank was really good. He donated, I don't know how many hundreds of dollars. It just bears, frisbees, water bottles, backpacks. I mean, he, we see whatever he needs, what he told me. And, um, I mean, I was speaking with him afterwards. Um, we're planning to do some stuff at the end of the year too because we have some money left over and we're gonna try and do some stuff for the schools that we can. Um, so that's kinda where we're at with that program. Um, it's been, it's been fun. We, it was a lot of work. We've, I've been very fortunate to work with the school that we have. Michelle helps me out quite a bit. The finance department, when we go ask for, um, you know, to get the POs and stuff like that, they've been, it's a lot of work. And it's a lot of work for them, so, but they work really well with us and we're lucky to have them. And Mr. Brown, everybody that we work with has been really good. Um, I don't know. Do you guys have any questions?
I guess I was, I was the one that was a bit, uh, confused. I'd seen on the, on our website, it was like the attendance success program. And I was like, "Oh, what is this? I wanna learn more about this." And, and, um, so thanks for, for coming and, and enlightening me a little bit on, on that. And I appreciate all the work that you do in, in, in the district.
The district worked well together. It's not anybody's individuals that setting the tone of, everybody works well as a group. So we have a good district for this stuff. So I think that's why we do well, to be honest with you. So... Um, I won't take up your time with this, but House Bill 236 is on our agenda for ASI. It's like 37 pages or something like that. So if you guys get bored, that might be coming up in the next, not next school year, but the following school year. Um, I don't know if it's gonna pass or not, but it's, it's a lot. And, um, we're probably about 75% of it already, what we're doing now. Most of it's gonna fall into the CYFD stuff. Um, so that's kinda where it's at.
Well, open it up to questions from the board or administration. Anybody have questions?
How, with the community, how, and I know you, you came to my work and got, and you, you have a donation, but...
Right.
To the rest of the community, was it, how was the reaction? Were, did they work with you good?
You know what? Believe it or not, 'cause it, and it was kind of, it was a learning curve for us because when I started doing this and we found out what we had to do after we got the grant awarded, um, we had to kinda start from scratch because we didn't have anything set up for this program at all. And that, Ms. Michelle was, showed us how to get involved with the, with getting a, an account for us, you know, that's only for the ASI. And, and we had to get donation letters and we had to try and, you know, solicit from people that we've never had to do that before. So it's kind of a learning curve in a lot of sense. But the ones that we did solicit money from or other donations from, it was pretty, we only had a handful of people that, that basically told us no. And, um, one of the big reasons was, um, and I guess you can argue it was, nobody helped me when I was in school. Well, that's probably 40 years ago. A lot of things have changed. It has. In reality, stuff has changed from when I was in high school to, you know, when this individual was. But everybody else seemed to be doing well. I mean, we were promising the kids that we're gonna give 100% back of the money back to them. So this isn't gonna go to pay for trips or, you know, anything for us. This isn't gonna go all back to the kids. So whatever, when we did the challenge to the students, that's what was the challenge. And, um, we included all, all of our schools. We went to Cliff and brought in Cliff schools and challenged Cliff schools. We went to the pre-K and did an ice cream party for them, just to have it so we could get that engagement with them. And we had law enforcement with us. Um, we, like I said, we didn't leave any school unattended in this, even though they don't pertain to ASI like, um, pre-K or, or, or the kindergarten program. We covered everybody, which in itself was a lot of work because we've never done it.
Yeah.
But hopefully it'll be better next year. I got, I got a good feeling about next year, so hopefully we can continue that.
I will say, I think it's awesome that we're changing attendance to not be punitive, but to be positive.
Right.
Is that, we're encouraging. Um, I coached, or I helped coach a soccer team. It's a, not school affiliated. But we leave town on Fridays to go to tournaments because we've gotta check in. They all wanna make sure that they go to school and get counted for perfect attendance before they get checked out. So it's, I mean, it's really encouraging a lot of kids. So I just wanna give you that feedback that it's...
Appreciate it.
That, you know, it's more than just probably your targeted kids, you know, your, your ones that you're really trying to keep there, but it's...
We're targeting all the kids in the beginning, just to get them to keep going and then, you know, whatever. We do have punitive at the end. If, if we can't get them to kind of conform or whatever with the parents, with the, with the law structure, we can still use enforcement. We don't like to, but if we have to, we will. But we try and definitely cover everything before we get to that point. Because it's no good, doesn't induce any good if the parents just get filed on and the kids out for the rest of the school year.
Yeah.
But we do use that tool if we need it.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Good.
Any questions or comments?
I just love that you're engaging the kids and, and like Ashley said, incentivizing is really huge. Um, where you still have that other piece in your back pocket, but that's not what we jump to. And I think that's really, really brilliant. And the fact that you engage the kids before you're ever doing any of that is part of the genius behind it because they wanna, they wanna do well. Kids are pleasers.
Right.
You know, um, and they want approval and they want to do well and succeed. And when we see the correlation of numbers, attendance to grades to learning, unfortunately, to testing, um, when we see all that data piled up, it's just, this is a brilliant approach. So thank you for your work.
I guess the next year, we're gonna start earlier, try and get more, get better, better prizes. We whetted their appetite with what we did this year. Maybe next year, we can actually get a, a big buyout of it because those statistics, we are serious about what we're trying to do, so.
No, I, I would, uh, agree. I think, uh, getting to all the kids early and not just, you know, the ones that are already having issues with attendance is, is probably the, the proactive step. Because I think that's, that's an issue that's, um, that, that we battle is, is folks don't value the education as much as they used to. And, "Oh, don't worry about it." You know, just miss a day or, you know, just miss, you know, it's okay if you, if you miss a day. It's like, oh, that's not the, that's not the message we wanna, we wanna send. We wanna students to show up, hey, that school's important. It's important to, to be in class every single day. And so I think by reaching out to all students and, and as, as mentioned, trying to be proactive and incentivize it, um, especially young, then they'll, that stays with them and, and hopefully stays with them through junior high and high school.
Hope so.
Thanks, thanks again.
Mr. President, members of the board, I can tell you that, uh, as a direct result of David's taking pride in his work, this is why it's so successful. And of course, he mentions his team and he's got a great team behind him. Um, just as, the same as Coach Truer, for goodness sakes. He takes pride in what he does. And whenever we give these folks the opportunity to own their particular program, look what happens. And so my hat's off to both of you gentlemen for the work you do for the district in both regards. Because, uh, when I was in school, if it wasn't for sports, I don't know if I would've finished school, to be honest with you, Coach. And then, uh, David, it's the, the brainchild of you and your, your creativity, thinking outside the box, so to speak, differentiated thinking. Because of that, it's, it is exploding into an incredibly successful program that I'm receiving emails from the state acknowledging the program. So, thank you.
It's a big group effort. Like I said, I, we all have ideas and they all seem to be, they look like they're gonna work, then we put them forward. So, yeah, it's, it's good. We, like I said, the team's good, so.
But both you all are doing such important stuff, important work that is just vital to the success of our district. So thank you both very much.
Yeah, thank you. Very well. Next on our agenda this evening, we have Mark Rusty, nation's, uh, network specialist with the district on the Sandy Hook program. And my understanding is that he doesn't have any updates for us at this time. And, and just to let the board and everybody know, that was something that, uh, the Sandy Hook program, um, and Mr. Potts or Mr. Brown, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this was something that I, initially I, I had seen in the Albuquerque Journal that one of the schools was utilizing, it's an app, I believe, or a website or a combination of the two, um, for students and staff to report, um, bullying activities or any kind of threatening type, uh, threats against a school. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so, and I, I had asked, you know, "Hey, is this something?" Because I knew that the original app that we had was being phased out. And so I had asked, "Hey, is this the one that we're, we're looking at?" And, and it is. And, uh, Rusty is, is working with them, I think, to, to try and get it up to speed with, with our district. And, uh, when he has, uh, more information for us, then we'll have him back to, to present. Any other information on that, Mr. Brown or Mr. Potts? Very well, we'll move on to, uh, Mr. Coker, principal at Silver High School. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. How's everybody doing? I'm glad you guys all had your cake, so you guys should be in really good moods because I'm trying not to put you in a bad way. So... Um, Mr. Brown asked me to come and talk to you guys a little bit about, um, I guess, all four of these. With the 5.0 GPA, course offerings, graduation requirements, see release. So I wanna know from you guys, do you want me to address them one at a time so we can field questions? Or just give my spiel for the whole thing and then we can field questions however you guys want?
One at, one at a time?
One at a time, okay. So, um, when Mr. Brown asked me to research a little bit on the 5.0 GPA scale, I actually turned that over to my esteemed colleague who was, uh, uh, just recovered from surgery. So she was sitting at her desk a lot. So I said, "Hey, could you take this on for me?" So she did. So I might ask her to come up with me. Might need to get her a chair. Are you, are you okay? Okay, you're good. So, um, I'm not sure exactly what you guys were looking for in the 5.0 scale. I think, um, from my past experience in working with this, uh, back in Deming, we did have this scale at one point in time. Of course, that got phased out. Um, but I think it's more or less to kinda reward some kids that are taking some AP-type classes or honors classes, just to kinda give them a little boost, if you will. I mean, they're taking some really hard classes, so they should get some, um, uh, points out of that. Um, however, what we found honestly is that it, it, it does work in a sense that it does kind of pull some kids in that wanna take that type of class and everything. However, it does kinda have a countereffect in it and it becomes more or less the sole reason to take any class that would be considered honors or AP. Uh, not that that's a bad thing, but our electives do suffer from that. And I wanna get into a little bit more.
Let me give you an example of that. And I'm speaking more as a parent's because my son was in Deming, graduated seventh in his class, 4.67 GPA. Brilliant, right? One problem. I wanted my son to be well-rounded. And I have a, I'm a huge fan of taking electives, to take electives so that you can see if you like something or dislike something. It's a very big component of what we do in high school. They should explore those things. So his GPA, he was penalized for taking CAD for three years because it wasn't an honors class. So you see, your elective choices kinda eliminate themselves because all those kids that are in that top kinda tier, they're gonna be taking AP. Um, did he take AP? Yes, he did. Lots of AP classes. But those other kids, they're, "Oh, I wanna be number one and number two." I don't know what, if it would've been different had he taken AP, but he didn't wanna take an AP. He wanted to take CAD because he thought he was gonna be an engineer. So I don't wanna pitch to whole kids. By staying with a 4.0 GPA, it's, it's a level playing field because most universities do not recognize a 5.0 scale. They're gonna convert it back. Some of the universities like UNM, they only look at their 16 core and two years of a foreign language. And then they convert that into their own 4.0 scale. So I understand the desire to tell kids, "Let's take AP and honors." But it's a lot different now because more and more universities are also looking at dual credit. Do you have dual credit? That was one of the questions that several of them said, "We look for dual credit." They don't necessarily hold strength of schedule, especially the, the area universities. UNM, NMSU, Western, UTEP, um, they don't really look at the strength of the schedule like they did maybe 10 years ago. Well, do you have AP? Do you have this? Do you have that? They're looking at the 16 classes and class ranking. And if 4.0 is all they're accepting, why do we wanna go to a 5 and then have to re-convert it to send their grades off? Which is what NMSU said. If you guys go to a 5, you have to send us the converted grades. So, I mean, that was just kind of one of our thoughts on that. And, um, GPA comes into play and ranking if you're going for major scholarships. And it's kind of interesting because several of the schools don't even require a minimum ACT. You can get in. They'll, they'll have open enrollment. They'll accept you.
At Western.
At Western. Not a problem there. But if you wanna go to some of the other schools, if you have a higher ACT, even if your GK's a little lower, they'll take the higher ACT. They'll let you in on a provisional. So options there.
Right. And just, just so, uh, I mean, it's kinda sounded like, "Well, I take an AP class." Well, that's not what we're really saying here. Um, kids that wanna go, I mean, we have a student right now. Um, he has 44 credits overall. A lot of that is from dual credit. He scored a 35 on his ACT. He could pretty much write his ticket to MIT if he'd want. And he took AP classes, those kinda schools as far as like, um, well, MIT, we have a student last year that went to Cornell. Um, those are the classes, those are the schools that AP's really gonna prepare you for. And I'm not saying APs would be a wasted time for any kids that wanna go to school here in New Mexico. Actually, it helps them out a lot because if they score three, four, or five, obviously, they get the, they get the credit for that class. So, the junior one would be college 101, and then senior would be 102.
Right, and that's universal. All the area universities said they would accept a three, four, or five.
And the reason I brought Cornell and MIT is usually those schools require a four or a five. And honestly, I mean, you know, I'm not saying our kids, our kids, I thought, did pretty well in the AP exam. I wish I had those statistics with me. But I know they did pretty well. But overall, you know, I was reading an article about how national, nationally, the AP scores have not really increased much. And I think that's more or less why colleges are actually putting more emphasis on dual credit, more emphasis on the, of course, the ACT, because that's scholarship. And then, more emphasis on, you know, if, if the, if the student, you know, took basically what her student did, more well-rounded type courses.
Right, and if you look at some of the courses that could lose enrollment, and if you think about band, choir, we have kids that take band, choir, and wind ensemble. That's three of their electives right there. Wake training, auto shop, national history day, or FFA classes, we don't have any honors courses. There's no curriculum for that. Sports medicine, strength and conditioning, we don't have any honors classes in here. So, if we push and say we've got the 5.0 scale, we stand a chance of losing some of our really good electus, especially in the FFA. Think about how many students that might impact.
But, I mean, as far as recognizing students that do take AP classes, those kids are recognized. I mean, that's part of what is now the Gold Scholar. In order to get the Gold Scholar graduation, they have to meet the requirements of taking AP classes. And honestly, I mean, again, to me, thinking 5.0 scale, that would probably entice more kids to take it. Right now, I guarantee the Gold Scholar is definitely enticing kids to take the AP classes. Because most of the kids I talked to, and I'd say it, that's the reason they took AP classes, is they wanted that Gold Scholar and everything else. And my, my, my concern is, you know, you really should take the class because it's challenging you and getting you ready for college. And, and we got kids that are worried about, you know, the Gold Scholar, which, you know, outside of Silver City, outside of Silver High School, really means nothing to any college. So, you know, we still wanna be able to honor those kids at graduation and everything else. But I don't think putting a 5.0 scale's gonna be a really good idea. Plus, I mean, right now, I think we're in our second year of finally flushing out from coming out with the 5.0 scale to where we have, like, right now, on our junior list, I was looking at, we have four kids that are tied for first in 4.0. Would that be different as a 5.0? Maybe, maybe not. But, right now, we can definitely go the second tiebreaker, which would be the ACT score. And the last, last year and the year bef, well, I think last year was the first year that it went into place, is that right? And then, this year, I mean, we've got a pretty clear-cut winner on that one, so.
The ACT of the top four students range from a 25 to a 30.
Right, so.
And those are all very good scores.
And like I said, Ms. Smith did her research. I had her call multiple colleges, obviously local ones like NMSU, Western, UNM. And then, I also had her talk to a couple of them out of state, like University of Arizona and UTEP. And, and the consensus on that, and Texas Tech, and the consensus on that is they prefer students who have dual enrollment, but they do, some of them do give consideration for AP honors classes. But almost every one of them on here like to see dual enrollment. Dual enrollment classes are important. Like to see dual enrollment, so.
And the only one on here that had a little bit different outlook was Texas Tech. They actually go through a review process.
Right.
And they'll look at everything you did, because they said they're looking for well-rounded students. But any of our students could apply to UNM, NMSU, Western, or UTEP and easily get in as long as they have a decent ACT or, you know, decent GPA.
Right. Questions from the board?
So, I have a question. I'm kinda the one who kind of uprooted this again to ask questions. And part of that reason is, you know, playing the devil's advocate. You know, when you're ranking kids, if you have a kid who took regular English and gets the four point, right? Gets the A, and you have a kid that takes AP and gets the B, right? There, we, I, I mean, I'm just looking at the honor, the workload for the honors courses, which people sign up for, compared to the regular, say, English class. And there's no credit in that. I mean, we can say there's a Gold Scholar, but it's like we just said.
Well, there actually is, though. If they can pass the exam, they'll hit college credit. So, that's their reward. It's not going to be immediate. And, you know, when I look back at some of the courses, my son took, he took calculus in high school. There were five kids in the class. Only five kids that wanna take calculus. So, why did he take calculus? He took it because he thought he was gonna need it. And I think that's where, you know, parents and, and our staff have to really guide kids with the right decision. Because right now, it's, it's hard for some of the AP students. They're struggling, you know?
And I, I feel like people keep coming back to the, oh, the kids are struggling in that class. And I do understand that. And you need to take it for the right reasons. And I'll just, I'm using my daughter as an example.
Sure.
But I'll just say, I expect her to take it. And I think, I mean, she's gonna go prepared. If she's gonna do something, I expect her to go prepared. And I've told her, if you get a B in the class, I'd rather you get a B and be prepared than to go take a class that you can slide through.
And get an A.
But there, in, in a sense, there's a punishment to that.
Well, there's.
Right now, as the grade, as, as the GPA stands.
The GPA, there is a punishment, but everybody else.
And let me ask you, but it matters for ranking, right? So, if someone gets an A in regular English and she gets a B in honors, the person with the A in regular English will rank above her. Is that correct?
It would.
But if I, if I can play the devil's advocate, to your devil's advocate.
Please.
We, we have, we have a young man that, that has no ambition whatsoever really to go to college. I mean, he's, he's making As. He took regular English. He made an A in everything. But his ambition is, is really to go to work. So, he's taken auto shop for four years. And, yeah, he might not be able to put a sentence together like an AP student, but if your truck breaks down, you probably want him over there to help you fix it and everything else. So, do I put less merit on that kid because he decided that was not his path? But his path was to go this other alternate route? Plus, you got the kids that take, you know, God knows, that do a credit. I think, Dr. Diaz, we probably gonna have about six or seven kids graduate with their associates this year. And so, those kids forego, or forewent their, basically, they're taking AP class because it would interfere with their dual credit class, so, I mean, there's a healthy balance.
I, I don't know how to address that, but what I'm saying right now is kids that take AP are being punished. And I don't know how to address that.
Right.
And I'm, I, this is not the forum to be arguing about this or discussing. But, I mean, I, I know when we did top 10 in the past, there were kids who took regular ed. As long as they took all regular ed, they were above the kids who spent their entire summer doing the papers.
Right.
Well, and I would challenge you, if Gold Scholar is that important to these kids to take AP, then put some kind of weight on that when it comes to ranking. Like, you have to have a minimum of however many AP, something. Some kind of incentivizing and make it, I mean, make it very clear. I mean, I would say implement it for a freshman class or something. Because it needs to be incentivized, but not to the point where, like, people you're talking about that do really well in other classes.
Right.
That that completely rules them out.
Right.
Or maybe it should just be core classes. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, right now, the scale, I mean, in order to get Gold Scholar, it, it's all based off your core classes that you took, so. We are looking at revamping kinda the name to fit what colleges are doing. Instead of calling it gold, silver, and honors, or whatever. We actually were thinking what the college does and doing like the summa cum laude, the magna, and the cum laude. So, but with the same criteria, to, to receive this, which is the highest ranking, would involve those AP-type classes, would involve honors-type classes, would involve the more rigorous, you know, coursework, if you will. Right now, basically, if you were to just take this, this would be Gold Scholar, this would be Silver, and this would be honors.
I just wanna use the language of the university, so we think that would be a better correlation for our students.
Right. And then, my AP teachers, I mean, they, they were basically, I, I think they think the opposite, is they don't think that AP should be counted into as a Gold Scholar because you do have the kids that just take it for that Gold Scholar. They actually want kids that wanna take it because they want to get better. I think your daughter's a perfect example, because that's your expectations. And if it's every other parent's expectation, so, look, you're gonna take this class because I want you prepared, then, yeah, I don't think this discussion would be happening.
And I, I will just add, my daughter's only B ever was in a junior AP class. So, she got credit in college. And it was worth it.
She took it, passed AP, right.
She, she passed it, and it, and it was worth it. I mean, it's, it's worth it, but it's delayed gratification, which is harder at this, at this level.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. I just look at, like I said, my own child. So, he had this, in my, like, somewhat inflated GPA because he took all these AP classes. In the big picture, did that help him? No, his ACT score, maybe the combination of the GPA, but everybody reverted it back to a 4.0 scale. Nobody looks at a 5.0 scale. So, it was a 4.0 scale, and the fact that he had a great ACT, that he got scholarships, that was the big part of it. So, I think that's another piece we're gonna work on, is helping our kids qualify for scholarships. We started it a little bit this year with Mr. Vera, Mr. Olson, but we're hoping to maybe expand that so that kids have and are aware of more opportunities. Because somebody gets that money, by none of our kids, so we're gonna work on that also next year.
And I would really encourage you to consider then, timing of electus versus those honors courses. Because I'll give you an example, again, just because it's the one I know. But my daughter this year had to choose between her science course and her sports lab. Does she wanna do sports lab? Yeah.
But it interfered with the honors.
Yeah, so part of it is timing. You can't accommodate every single class and every single kid. I mean, there's a schedule to be had.
And that's something we are looking at with the master's schedule. We're kinda looking at doing some different things next year, as far as that goes. But I just want you to know, I mean, just, just because we're up here saying 5.0 scale's not a good idea, in our opinion, doesn't mean we're not open to entertain, you know, if you guys wanna come in and talk to me and, and, you know, pitch it a little bit more. As you said, this is not the forum to.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if there's another answer, but I know right now, it's not incentivized. I mean, it's, take the easiest track, because that'll get you the ranking.
Right.
And, and I, I'm.
But will that prepare you for college, if that's your goal?
But we're talking about gratification, right now. We get a walk in the front.
It'll get you the scholarship, and it'll get you, it'll get you the scholarship and the ranking.
This is instant gratification.
Uh-huh. That's what we're dealing with.
Yeah. And I totally understand, but we are definitely open to, you know, entertain some more discussion on this. And Dr. Diaz, if you can come up with, you know, brainstorm idea and you wanna share it, by all means, you know, my office is already open. I think you know where I work.
I run into you a lot.
You do. You always bring your husband lunch. I don't get that.
I'm sorry. I mean, you're welcome.
So, my question on, on this is, and, and I think you answered it for the most part. Universities, by and large, don't accept anything with the 4.0?
Yes, sir.
They have you convert it?
Right. Actually, in the past, and I think this is when I was working down in Demming, when we had our 5.0 scale, the, the universities would convert it. They've gone away from that, because a lot of schools have kinda gone away from it. So, if you submit a transcript with, with like a 4.7 or 4.9 or whatever, they're gonna kick it back and say, you need to convert it, and then you can send it back to us. Some universities will do it for you, but a lot of them will not. So, I mean, it does kinda put a little bit more work on a registrar to have to go back through the transcripts and re-convert those back to a 4.0, so.
And right now, the, is it the AP courses only? Or that we would be looking at, that would qualify you for the?
Right. No, because what qualifies you for the Gold Scholar is like, like Dr. Diaz's kiddo is taking pre-AP classes, honor classes and such. So, those, those would also count as well.
Those would be a little bit.
If we were to move to that scale, we would have to look at all honors and pre-AP AP classes.
So, those would be bumped a little bit, and then maybe the AP would be a little bit higher than that?
Well, I know, again, I'm, I'm going by my whole experience down there. Anything that had an honors or pre-AP or AP label was automatically a 5.0 class. So, and that was another can of worms that was kinda brought open because now, everybody wanted to get a piece in that. So, we had our art teachers saying, well, my advanced art is really hard, and can we make it an honors class? And then, I mean, can't blame them. He was losing numbers because most kids were going into the 5.0 classes, not taking the 4.0 classes. So, he had to find a way to counteract that. So, so we had, we had honors art and honors welding, I'm pretty sure. I'm not sure, but, you know, I can get you the list. But it just got a little ridiculous, and I think that's one reason why the district said, we're done.
Well, we gotta make sure there's rigor in those courses.
Right.
It's called an honors class or AP. It really has to be rigorous.
And I just want them to be rewarded for that. Because it's hard for me to justify to my daughter when she spends half her summer writing that paper or her entire Christmas break.
From what I heard, that AP's doing away with summer work.
Well, that's not really a good thing.
No, it's not. But I, I think what the AP people, you know, that are seeing is that, that summer work is just not getting completed. It's, you know, kids, kids are basically spending summer with their families and being a kid.
And I guess my argument, and I, I will try to think of a solution too, would be, then there should be some way to incentivize the ranking. Because the ranking does matter for scholarships, and the ranking does matter for graduation, and it does matter for college entry.
So, but, most of the colleges, like I said, we looked at. I mean, you may have some different information, but the ones she, she looked at, there are some colleges that look at ranking, but a lot of them ACT scores and a lot more are looking at, more are looking at dual credit. Because obviously, that should be your college setting.
But I know it means a lot to kids.
It, it means a lot to kids, and I'm not gonna argue that fact.
Yeah. Graduation ranking, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
And maybe there's a, a way, or maybe someone's already figured that out. Instead of having the 5.0 scale, there's some.
Yeah, I'm open to that.
Right.
Something that you could.
And, and that is something that I've asked, you know, Ms. Smith and Mr. Olson and Ms. Rivera to kinda look around the state and see what other schools are doing and everything. Because we definitely wanna, you know, be prepared, be on the cutting edge. If somebody else is doing something better, we want a piece of that. You know, we're not gonna reinvent the wheel, but we'll definitely steal it, so.
Call it the horseshoe club, and you get a horseshoe, horseshoe for every AP class you take.
Yeah.
And that counts towards, you get five of those, and you get bumped up a, that would open up a whole nother can of worms.
I like your thinking, though. I was thinking horseshoe club, is that what we're gonna be out there throwing horseshoes?
They used to put horseshoes all over the helmets. Was that when you were coaching?
They still do that.
Do you still put horseshoes all over the helmets?
So, you put them all over their graduation hats, so.
That's right.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
Course offerings.
Course, course offerings. Are we ready to move on to that?
Yeah, I didn't mean to beat it up. Thank you for giving me.
No problem, Dr. Diaz. Anytime. Course offerings, just so you know, Silver High is always looking to, I guess, update our courses. Look at, see, take, taking consideration, of course, what the state requires in order for graduation, which goes into the next piece. But also, taking needs assessment on what kids are actually wanting to take and everything else. So, we are, right, and right now, we're in the midst. We just completed our preregistration, which has our normal courses. I mean, the courses that we offer yearly, because that's what the state tells us we have to offer. But we are also looking at some other options. I know with Mr. Clough's help, we've worked with a lot of the community members and talking about other programs that we can actually offer that would be a pathway into either an associate's degree or certification-type program. Again, it goes back to that adage that not all of our kids are going to college. And not all of them want to go to college. They want to just get out and work. And I always tell the kids, hindsight's 20/20. If I knew then what I know now, I probably wouldn't have gone to college either. I mean, some of the jobs out there that are available for these kids to actually earn certification in high school are just outstanding. And as a matter of fact, I had a discussion, I think at our last community forum, was talking, well, no, I take that back. This was just this morning, I had a discussion with a carpenter from the mine. And he's saying that, you know, most of our, most of our guys, they're basically on the verge of retirement. They got a few more years left, and there's nobody in the wings, you know? And carpentry is a really good skill, really good job. I mean, you can almost write your ticket everywhere. So, we're looking at programs that are gonna be in demand for our, for our students here in the community. And then, also for our students to expand outside of the community. Obviously, you wanna keep them here, but if the jobs aren't here, or if their heart's not here, and they wanna go somewhere else, we wanna make sure they're prepared. So, we are constantly looking over, revamping our course offerings. I'm not sure exactly if that's what you wanted to hear, but I will entertain questions.
ACT.
ACT. We are, we actually have a course, Mr. Lamardo's kinda heading it up. And I got some exciting news about the ACT, too. Ms. Rivera, would you like to do, would you like to say that one, or you want me to go ahead for you?
I can't. I don't have a whole lot of information.
No, we don't have a whole lot of information. But anyway, we do have a, right now, we have Mr. Lamardo with the help of Alicia Beck. They're, they're together doing a college 101 class. So, basically, I don't know if you guys have heard the community initiative called College Bound, headed by Alicia and her, and her husband, Dr. Beck. Anyway, she's asked to come in school and, and assist with Mr. Lamardo making a college 101, well, I should say college success class, and not 101. But one of that is, they are doing a lot of ACT prep, getting kids ready for it. They've actually had several meetings in the evenings where they offered it to the community. I know they've had decent turnouts, not obviously the turnout they want, but I think the, the program in itself is getting off, getting off the ground. Another teacher came up to me today and was asking, can, well, she's, she basically polled her class and finding out a lot of juniors this late in the stage have not taken their ACT for some odd reason or another. I don't know if they feel prepared for it or not. So, what she was asking me about is if we could do maybe an ACT day, where we actually take a group of juniors early in the year. where we actually take a group of juniors early in the year and, and basically test them, you know, as a practice test. It wouldn't count for anything other than let's see where you're at. And that would give us data back so we can find out what skills are lacking to take that ACT piece, at least in the English department. We'd like to get everybody else involved, but at least the English department has taken the initiative on that, so.
So what kind of support are we providing from the school district for that college bound program?
Um, every support they need. I give them, uh, places to meet. I open up computer labs for them to utilize. Um, Ms. Beck and Mr. Lamardo, we use our, what we call our Western New Mexico room. Um, so they, they're allowed to come in there and they work with a small group of kids right now, but we're hoping the program takes off. This used to be a dual credit class that Western offered, however, they cut the funding for it. And, um, but we saw the need for it. So, you know, with my approval and my blessing, I guess, I said, yeah, so let's run with it. I mean, if anything, what's best for kids, we'll do, so.
And is there like a free test? Like are they taking practice tests online throughout the program?
Yeah, she utilizes, uh, both of them utilize a computer lab, which is right next door. So they take the kids over there and they're doing practice tests and whatnot. And then they come back with that data and start working on things that they are obviously lacking in. So they can obviously hopefully score better. I would love to have everybody score, you know, up in the thirties of an ACT, but, you know.
Cause that, I mean, that's where, especially when going, anyone going out of state, that's where the money is.
Right, right.
It's really important.
You're absolutely correct. And then again, we have, uh, kids that have aspirations going to east side of the, of the United States. And then now we gotta start looking at SATs because that's what most colleges over there take, so. I don't know if that's something that we can bring in or whatever, so.
So you, they have the high school success class or what is it called?
Right, that's the ninth grade class. The college success is the one that's geared towards, you know, the college bound, ACT prep, all that good stuff.
So is that, when they're doing the ACT prep, is it a formal class at the school right now that they get credit for?
Uh, they are receiving high school credit for, yes ma'am.
So the prep is within the class during school hours?
Yes ma'am.
Not just the evening stuff?
No, no, they offer evening sessions for kids that, that either A cannot fit it in their schedule so they can come or just, you know, kids that maybe even out of school. They, they don't, they don't really specify they have to be high school kids and maybe kids that graduated last year that have maybe worked and they wanna get, take their ACT and score better, try to get a scholarship here and there. So they do tend to work with all kinds of students.
Like homeschool people and.
Exactly. We've even had some kids from Aldo come over, Calvary Christian come over. Uh, we haven't had anybody from Cobra yet, but we're branching, so.
And that's a half credit? I mean, right, right now it wasn't a full semester, is it?
Right, so right now it's gonna be a half credit. It'll probably still remain a half credit as far as high school goes, but I mean, it's an extra half credit elective for the kids to get. So, and it actually, you know, pinpoints a need that we see at the school, so.
No, I, I think that that's a, a very important class and, and maybe it's not just called ACT prep, but like you say, it's, it's a kinda college prep.
Right, right.
Encumposes, you know, maybe the application process in addition to the test and, and for a full semester.
Yeah. Full semester, scholarship assistance, uh, filling out FAFSA. I mean, they, they cover the gambit. I mean, yes, they focus a lot on ACT because as it was sa- stated earlier, that's really your ticket to get into college. I mean, if you're gonna look at some scholarships, you need a, you need a solid ACT score. And, uh, so that is their main focus, but they do a plethora of other things such as, you know, as you stated, the application process, the resume process, scholarships, FAFSA, you name it, they try to cover a lot. Now, will it build into a year-long class? I mean, there's a lot of information that go out, so I'm not sure. We'll see. But I think as long as we can cycle as many kids through that class, um, like I said, this year or this semester was its first semester. Um, I think next year we'll see more kids and more kids. So if we can offer it first semester and get about ten, maybe fifteen kids, the next semester another fifteen kids. That's thirty kids that didn't have that help beforehand, so.
And then do you have other half-credit classes that obviously will work with their schedules?
We, yes ma'am, we, we do, we usually do figure that out. I mean, um, mostly, and that kinda goes into maybe graduation requirements and senior release. Uh, most of those kids are in the upper class. So, um, you know, some other classes once they ta- taken it, well, like this year it just worked out because we had a, uh, social work class that, uh, was actually a dual credit. And that lady had to, well, she didn't have to leave, she chose to leave. But she left and got a job in Cruz's. So we were kinda like, well, what are we gonna do with these kids? And that's when the whole idea, and that's where college success kinda born. But yes, for next year, we will definitely have something that's butted up against to it. So those kids taking a first semester will have something to go to second semester.
And Mr. President, to follow up on what Mr. Coker, we did a visit with Western New Mexico University at the end of January. Um, Andrew Lunt is our new director of admissions. And we are in discussion with them of the college success sequence because they're seeing the same need. So we are supposed to meet with them in early April. As we could be looking at pursuing a grant through the university as well for us to do a two-course sequence with college success, college success one-on-one and one-on-two. That's something the university has on their radar. So we did offer them that yes, we'd be very interested in doing that two-course sequence. And it could be one semester one-on-one, one semester one-on-two, and it meets their freshman entry requirement at Western New Mexico University.
And that would still include the ACT prep because I'm just wondering if once they're already there.
It would include, everything included, ACT prep, financial aid submission, loan applications, financial literacy for college students. That's what they're wanting to do with their sequence because they're finding more and more of those kids are lacking. And their student support service person or their aide would be more than happy to help them walk through because that's his job and he would be part of the process that would be doing this. And they wanna make sure those kids know exactly every step it takes to get into university with one-on-one and then one-on-two work on the transitionary classes. So that's the mindset of their new director of admission of how to get more kids understanding what it is to be in college sooner. And it wouldn't only just be open to juniors and seniors, it'd be nine through twelve is what they're hoping to have happen.
And kind of along the same lines, just, just, I mean, obviously Western's here and we wanna, you know, support them and everything else. But the counselors do an outstanding job of getting also like New Mexico State, New Mexico Tech, U N M down here, Don Yana. So, um, you know, kids sign up to meet with them so they, they can actually pose those questions and, and get some answers in that. And some of that data can be fed back to that college, uh, success program. So maybe you don't wanna go to Western, you wanna go to U N M, so it's a different entrance requirement. So let's look at, you know, what you need to do for that and everything else. So we're not like, obviously, again, we wanna support Western and if this thing's bugged to them, I'm sorry. But, you know, we also wanna support our students if they wanna go elsewhere, so.
And that's, I, I think the high school used to offer that is the ACT prep is a zero hour. And I think that went away at some point, but I'm, I'm glad to see it back. And I think if we can grow it into more, uh, whether we partner with Western or not, I think it's worthwhile. And it, and it sounds like the probably target group is gonna be your sophomores and your first semester juniors.
Juniors, right. Yeah, we hope by the senior year they're doing other things, but I mean, we'll take seniors as well. But, you know, yeah, our target definitely will be sophomores and juniors.
Cause it's a.
Can I just add, I did some research after I met with you on the ACT, act.org. I plugged in the question if they offer pre-ACT and they do, they started in two thousand sixteen. So it would be similar to the PSAT and it would be offered to, um, our sophomores in that first semester as well. I would just need to find out about ordering that type of stuff.
Right. And, and the reason we're kinda talking about that is, is the other aspect that I just barely got the information this morning, so I, I can't share too much. But, you know, offering a, uh, kind of a practice test for all, um, right now we're looking at either late sophomores or all early juniors, just kinda see where they're at. So we can say, okay, this is your current score now on the practice test. What, what skills are you lacking so we can bump those scores up in, in what areas, so.
As, as a parent, I think that's gonna be very useful because a lot of times kids don't know, well, I wanna go to college or I don't wanna go to college, I'm not sure if I wanna go to college. Take this class, take your ACT prep. Okay, this is what you scored. We probably shouldn't be looking at college or we should really look at some, uh, additional educational opportunities to bring this score up.
Right.
And, and so I think, you know, I kinda joke about it, but I'm, it's kinda serious too. How, how can we better direct kids after, but we've gotta take, they've gotta take the test before they're done with their junior year.
Yeah. It, it's helpful because scholarships are starting earlier. I think a lot of kids used to think, well, you know, scholarships aren't until the spring, I got all this time. But there's a lot of money that's getting missed out because scholarships start in August, September, October. And they're like, wow, I did not know that. And some of them, most of them do require a certain ACT score, so.
And, and maybe shift gears a little bit, but still on the, on the course offerings, I think, uh, and, and Mr. Clough, you've, um, jumped in, but with a community dialogue, I think that's another important piece to figure out what our, what our community workforce needs are. And, and plugging in what their needs are, finding out what their needs are, which we're, we're, we're doing, I think is great. Um, I, you know, I think we're, we're lacking a little bit in some, some electives and maybe on the healthcare side. I'm, I'm a little bit biased there, but, but also on the, on the, um.
Dr. Diaz?
I'll second that.
But, but also on, uh, the, um, network specialist, computer, IT, whatever you, you wanna, uh, term it. But I think there's, um, great opportunity for, for students.
Correct.
In those fields and, and I think having us some, uh, other options there. Or maybe, and, and Mr. Potts maybe will speak better to this, like on the healthcare side, CNA. And I don't know, you know, that's, uh, maybe a program we can help with, uh, you know, medical assistant. There's, there's a, a number of these type of things on the healthcare side. I'm sure there's something probably on the IT side as well.
Well, we're in the process, actually, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. CNA looks like a very promising piece that we'll be able to offer as dual credit. I was trying not to, but he called me out, I had to do it.
Tell them about what we're doing with Dr. Jenkins at the university.
Well, you go ahead.
Okay, well, since, yeah, I put Dr. Jenkins, who's the director of allied health and nursing at the university with, uh, Peter Lamardo and Mr. Coker. Um, the two areas we are targeting are the community health worker, uh, certificate that they have just started branding at Western New Mexico, which is a gateway to nursing, allied health occupations and CNA. And the CNA certification, I just met with him last week. We're gonna schedule a meeting in the next couple of weeks to clearly delineate how that course should be delivered, um, for our students and how many semesters it should be. Because it's a, it's a fifteen-week certificate course for a community health worker at the university right now. Um, he's suggesting we do a year-long course and that kid will come out with a certificate to work as a community health worker from the Department of Health from New Mexico, what, New Mexico Department of Health. And we know that is a gateway job based on what's happened in Santa Fe, Albuquerque, for them to go into other allied health occupations, um, with that. So they've made a heavy emphasis on that. And of course, if you keep looking at the hospital website as well as all the, as medical assisting facilities around here, CNA is a huge need. Um, they had it drop off. We had the opportunity to do it, but a, but an instructor was not assigned to us for this year. So Mr. Dr. Jenkins is gonna make sure that we have that in line. And that's a two-year sequence of courses that will lead to a certi- certificate that could count towards our gra- alternative demonstration psychology for graduation. So that's already been in the works. We just have to get it finalized and get the agreement put in place for next fall.
And, and I don't even think it's necessarily that, that we have to have them, you gotta, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna sign up for two years in high school so you get the certificate. Even if they get like the, the basics to, when they graduate, then they can jump to that and, and fairly quickly, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why the community health worker certificate is gonna be the first step leading into that degree. So that way they can really explore what that job does. And then it gives them office operation, um, medical support inside an office. So that can be used a variety of different ways. That could spark an interest in that kid that goes on to learn more. And what Dr. Jenkins has found out from his experience working with this, there are a lot of medical facilities around here, including Heal Regional Medical, that will hire them immediately as an eighteen-year-old and put them into training and put them into programs that they wanna do in order to keep them. Um, so that is a huge need right now. So that's why the CHW certificate into the CNA or the other pathways is gonna be so critical for those kids because that's exploratory class we're using to expand healthcare workers across the state of New Mexico.
And just to kinda echo that, our students have, have noted several times on several surveys, that's actually one of our highest needs they, they would like as far as a dual credit type or elective type classes is a CNA. But I do agree with you, I don't think we should lock them in a two-year deal because it's gonna be like the kid that wants to be a vet. It's all cool to be a vet because they get to play with animals until the one that got ran over gets brought in and they don't want nothing to do with that anymore. So I think it's really important that they have some kind of exploratory before they actually dive in and, and, and commit basically, like you said, two years to it, so. But we definitely wanna bring it open to our kids, so. And then as far as IT, I mean, we are, uh, we're right now, we're, we're still, we still got the project lead the way that we're, uh, working with, with, uh, Ms. Zimmerman. And that, that deals with a little bit more intense on the computer science. The kids are not just kinda getting on the computer and learning about Microsoft Word and all that good stuff. Um, that's kinda gone by the wayside. They're actually programming, uh, coding, this, that and the other. And it's a sequential class, so next year's, if this group of kids takes the next year, uh, batch, it'll be, it'll be a higher level, uh, class. And I think it goes all the way to cybersecurity. So we are trying to increase the, uh, uh, IT level. And I think we've talked to IT before, um, you know, when we get kids that are ready, you know, it'd be great internship, uh, to work with these guys as far as, you know, job shadowing, figure out what they do, uh, and stuff. We also have one of my, um, Mr. Staley, I call him pretty much Slash because he does everything. Um, he wants to put in a, a maintenance-type program for like building maintenance and not just necessarily high school, even though it needs it constantly. But, uh, just overall maintenance of, of what it takes to maintain a, a, a building, uh, you know, a place of business, whatever, so. So we're looking at different options. I mean, I think he polled his class and that came out as number one and everything else. So, I mean, we're trying to address the needs of every kid, also maintaining what the state, uh, requires us to do as far as graduation requirements go, so.
Other questions on course offerings? No, sir.
Sorry, I won't look at you.
All right, uh, onto the next area, graduation requirements.
Right, um, I'm not sure exactly the, the question on this, but I can tell you graduation requirements for the state of New Mexico haven't changed in a few years. It's still twenty-four and a half credits to graduate and that's our graduation requirements as far as the number of credits that are needed to graduate. I think basically, correct me if I'm wrong, is it seventeen or seventeen and a half? No, it's seventeen. So seventeen of those are, uh, required classes that they have to take. And I say required because the other, uh, seven and a half is electives, so, um.
And, and I can tell you that probably the, the next two were, were, um, concerns that I brought up, uh, and they kinda tie together the graduation requirements and the senior release. Um, in the, the years that I've been going up to the high school, I was always kind of amazed. It was like, you know, I would, I would be up there, uh, typically in the afternoon and kids would come in and I'm like, what are you doing here? You're supposed to be in class. Oh no, I've got senior release. I've got senior release. And so they would be coming in.
Either doing their classes in the afternoon or see you.
Mm-hmm, and when it was, when it was still class time.
Right.
What's, what's good, the senior release, when I went to school, I went to school from eight to three, three-thirty and.
Right.
What is a senior release and, and, and I, I think I'd seen it more and more often. So it was, my, my concern was, uh, year after year, every time we have, um, Legislative Finance Committee, the two times with, they've been down here, you know, I hear Dr. Shepherd talking. The kids that we're getting from high schools, they're not ready for college. They're taking a hundred-level courses. They're not ready. They're not prepared. So it just got me thinking. It was like, well, what are our graduation requirements? Are our graduation requirements just the minimum? Should we look at, at more? Um, if kids are, are finishing halfway through their senior year, should we look at, at bumping that up? Um, having them take more classes? Um, so that, that was my kinda concern that I, I wanted to kinda throw out there for, for discussion was, um, you know, where are we at? You know, I just, time and time I hear folks that are going to college. Not everybody's gonna go to college, but folks that are going to college are like, um, I wasn't prepar- prepared. I had to take hundred-level courses. What can we, what can we do from a policy standpoint, from a graduation standpoint to better prepare those kids that wanna go to college?
Right. As, as far, as far as better prepare them, it's, it's kinda gonna be, have to be concerted effort all the way up through, um, you know, and it's gonna have to start probably earlier than high school. Because we're talking about developing habits such as study skills, test-taking skills and whatnot. So when they're at the high school, we're reinforcing those skills and hopefully not teaching them like, oh wow, I never knew how to study until I gave them to high school and everything else. Um, another aspect that you mentioned that actually falls on the job side and that was something that came out of the community dialogue is, is they, and I'm not saying it's all students, but some of the students, they, they don't know how to get up in the morning. They don't know how to show up to work on time, this, that and the other. And, and, you know, can I, can I say, well, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, it's pretty reflective because they're always tardy to class or they're always late and everything else. Um, but what can we do to improve that? It is, like I said, it's gotta start at, at an earlier age. And hate say it's gotta kinda start at home as well. I mean, we gotta have the support from the parents. I mean, we know the kids that, uh, I was talking to a teacher earlier and said, my kid knows how to go to work because that's my expectation a- and, and this, that and the other. this, that, and the other, and um, you know, the school reinforces it, does her kid ever show up late to class? No, I mean, she's got, she's always responsible and stuff like that, so, again, it's a skill that has to start early and hopefully start at the home, and we can just cultivate it and just keep reinforcing it. Now, as far as the credit requirement, right now it's twenty-four and a half, that is the state minimum. I mean, you know, we we were kinda having this discussion, we were talking about what to do for senior release, some of those kids really worked their tails off to get that senior release, um, because what they do is, you know, they they pass all their classes their freshman year, they do their sophomore year, and then sometimes in lieu of an elective, they'll ask if they could take another core class, we can eliminate that, so it would make them take at least four core classes, that'll be um their senior year, um, but is that fair to do that, kid, if they're ambitious enough and they can handle the load? Um, and or do we say, well, instead of senior release, we're gonna require you to take dual credit, or you have to take this elective class, or we're gonna bump up the credits to twenty-eight or whatever? I I don't have the answer to that, and I'm I'm definitely open to discussion, but I know as my admin team and counseling team, that's something we have discussed, and I guess one of the things that came out was bumping up the credits, because that would at least tie them back to the high school, but is that gonna be advantageous for those kids?
Well, I have a per- when he brought this up in the agenda meeting, I was like, I I have a I have an example, and you know my daughter, third in the class, very ambitious, um, is doing fine in college, but what what that senior release did to her is that it's kind of like an athlete that's exercising, and when you're in and when you're in school, you're using your brain and you're actively engaged.
Right.
And and they've done that their whole life, and then they get to their senior year and it's just kinda like, eh, and yeah, I mean, she had a job, she came to work, she did stuff like that. But she lost that, what was the word I used, stamina?
Mm-hmm.
In that senior release year, it it changed her, and so, one week into college, she's like, Mom, I'm not sure college is for me, and I'm like, no, 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 it's not that, it's that you've lost that.
Right.
Stamina. And so I think that's something that, although they look forward to it and it's great and it's awesome, that you can kinda just like chill, it does have an effect, I think, on on their on their brain learning, on cognition, on, you know, those neuroreceptors, all of those things, I think it changes, and so I think, when he brought that up, I just thought, you know, I'm not sure that it's all positive, and we're gonna be the most unpopular board in the whole entire world, right? Whenever we do get rid of senior release, but just to say, you know, what you know, what's best for the child and where they're headed.
Right. And I understand that, it's, I mean, perfect example is that, you know, I have kids, juniors now, that have basically fulfilled, they will they will have fulfilled their math requirements, which you only need four masks to uh graduate, and a lot of these kids, what happens is they take like Algebra One in their eighth grade year, they take geometry their ninth grade year, heck, I got an eighth grader taking geometry now, and then they have Algebra Two their sophomore year, and then they take whatever math for their their fourth math for the junior year, so, eh, math is one of those things, and I will attest, if you don't use it, you're gonna lose it, that's for sure, and um, a- and that's why I tell kids, I said, you know, if anything, take a college class or something, try to keep that up, so, I don't have the answer for that. You you're probably right, you're gonna be the most unpopular board, I'll be the most unpopular administrator, so be it, but um, you know, again, I mean, that's something we are researching, we're kinda looking around at other schools to see what they're doing to combat this, uh, your concerns, Mr. McMillan, and yours as well, Mrs. Montenegro, but um, yeah, as soon as we come up with an answer, we'll, at a good one, you know, because, I mean, that's something you're gonna have to sell to kids, because the kids are like, w- w- wait a minute, you you're saying now I gotta work harder and more, and well, yeah, I mean, that's that's exactly what we're saying, but you know, kinda goes back to the, you know, the uh FIPPOGPA, you gotta gotta give them something in order for that to sell.
Yeah.
And you're not having mass riots and.
And that may be the perfect opportunity, because graduation requirements are gonna be changing for those that are expected to go to the workforce versus college, and so.
Right, right.
I don't know if you can differentiate between the two.
We can look at those paths, that's true, yeah.
You know, if if they are going to do a job.
Right.
You know, if it's a co-op, then maybe it would be different than.
Now the times, we'll look at it with the twenty-twenty alternative demonstrations of competency, so that's one of the things we're getting back from the community dialogues too, is how do we address that need for those kids that don't wanna do? We do have a large percentage of kids that do have a desire at least to look at college as a freshman, if you look at the survey we sent out earlier, about sixty percent of our kids say right now they're looking and wanting to go to college.
Right.
Bet you we give that survey in three years, that number's gonna drop again when you see this new model come on board.
Right.
Yeah.
That they, if they have the opportunity to go get a certificate or those types of things, that could change, and plus, it's an education of our parents.
Yeah.
As well, because they're looking at the old models, that we have to meet the core classes and like that, and in a new alternative demonstrations of competency graduation, we can substitute a welding math, a business math, as as one of the math credits, as long as in a pathway to employment or credential or certificate, so.
Right.
So the game's changing, so we've gotta look at all those things, and Mr. Coker and I have had these conversations all year, it's kinda the reason we wanted to get the community dialogue input, so we know exactly what our kids would be interested in and go for in working in those areas.
Right. Mr. Clef did bring up a good point, I mean, you know, you start changing the program and start looking at what the state requires and what the kid really needs and everything else, so you could start adding in, I mean, it it really comes down to at that point for for a student, a- again, I don't think, I don't know if the state minimum's gonna change, but it's still gonna be twenty-four and a half, so it's actually gonna be filler classes for electives, and we need electives that kids will actually wanna take and wanna stay on there and engage their brain, um, such as, you know, a welding math, if you will, or an auto mechanic math, or or something to that effect, so, it really comes down to a lot, what can we offer those kids instead of senior release? Because right now, senior release is pretty high topic, they love it, so.
Yeah.
So it's really gonna be like, well, you you could take this instead of senior release, I already know what the answer's gonna be, I don't even have to ask it.
It's it's something I think that we need to take a serious look at, because, and your example's perfect, uh, I mean, you ask anybody, well, do you wanna take a class or do you just wanna sleep in or go home early? I mean, everybody's gonna choose that that latter.
I agree.
Um, and and I think, eh, the question I ask is, what is the educational benefit to senior release? And I'm sure there's some that are gonna have jobs, it's like, sign up for co-op. Co-op, you get credit for for working, right?
Right.
Um, and and, you know, there's, I I looked around a little bit, there's uh other schools that offer something very similar, like, but it's either the first period or it's the last period.
Right.
And and I think kinda like what we, with our senior releases, they can either go to the commons or they can go to the library.
Mm-hmm.
And and this is kinda shifting gears a whole lot, but.
I think I know where you're going, though.
But it's it's kids, it's like, all right, there's there's no defined, all right, you can leave, or you can go to the commons, or you can go to the library.
Right.
If there's a security issue, where are you?
Right. And that's the same, that's the same problems we're we're looking at.
You know, if you're gonna say, okay, I'm gonna have senior release, I'm gonna go to the library and I'm gonna study on my studies, you're gonna go there and you're gonna, role's gonna be taken, so, if there is an issue, we know, oh, this kid's checked in, they were they were present for senior release.
Right.
Or no, they checked out of campus, once they stepped off, put out of campus, they're, you know, they're in the community.
Right.
So I I say, I look at it from a twofold perspective, what's the educational benefit, but then, right now, I think it's pretty loose on where they're able to go, what they're able to do, and in our time, well, I guess granted, parents have, most of them have a cellphone and parents are in communication with them.
Right.
Or can be, but I see that as another potential issue.
Right. Well, not going to worry, we haven't had it, but um, um, I think also too, the master schedule didn't quite, kinda goes back to Malia's uh issue with not being able to take an honors or the strength and condition class, because it would interfere with the honors class, so, again, we're we're working on that, tightening up the master schedule, and that'll be one of the things, if we keep senior release, which, you know, it might be at least for next year, and then we can start really looking at alternatives, because I really think if you're gonna replace senior release with something, it's gotta be something that's worth their while, I really do. I don't think that, you know, if you just throw something in, like an advisory or or whatever, um, a- and they're like, why am I taking this? You know, I think it's just gonna backfire on our face, so we just, I definitely wanna make it something, a program that's worthwhile, but the same token, tighten up what we already have right now.
Right. And that was the other thing, I was like, well, we don't need to to mandate or do away with senior release, and then we just open it up, well, then you can be uh an aide for three periods, or.
Right.
You know, I don't know that that's necessarily.
Gonna be.
Is there an educational benefit to that?
Right.
Is there um a risk to that? One of the things which I'll throw out, that kinda switches gears again, I was like, what is our our PE requirement, is it half a year or more?
One full credit.
One full credit?
Yes, sir.
Was, uh, what if what if we said, okay, new graduation requirement is you take PE every year of your high school year?
I, assuming the district has the the, they can do that, I know the state requirement is just one, so, yeah.
Given that obesity's on the list, it's not a bad idea.
No, it's not a bad idea, I'm not disagreeing with that.
No, 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 I'm three and four.
Yeah.
Nine.
I mean, we do have some kids that kinda take advantage, I mean, the one thing about senior release, I mean, as far as our athletes go, it doesn't really affect them, because they have to be there, they they wanna be there and this, that, and the other, so.
Yeah, and it would still, that would still be one of their, I mean, if they're in an athletic period, then.
Right.
That's their their credit, but that was kinda big picture, looking at the health of the community, you know, people aren't moving around enough.
Right.
They're not exercising enough.
Yeah.
The other thing is, I think studies have shown that if kids are active, they're more engaged in their in their class.
I totally agree with you on that.
Um, and so that was just something that, like I said, I've been, for years, I've been going, what are you doing here, it's only three o'clock, Mom, I'm on senior release. That's great for me, I can get you out to practice on time, but.
That's why he's there. He's supposed to be on time for something.
The more I've thought about it, and maybe it's been, the more I've, my kids are getting to that age, and I'm like, why are we doing this? What is the benefit?
Right.
What else can we offer?
A- and I think that's that's your that's your golden ticket question, is what else can we offer in place of that, that's gonna be somewhat enticing, uh, without making it look like it's punitive or punishment, like, all right, we figured you guys are wasting your time on senior release, so you're gonna take this class, which, you know, sorry.
Other questions or comments on graduation, senior release?
I'm out.
You're out too, then. She folds.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
You bet.
Wait, come back.
Get it.
Stay with us.
Next on our agenda this evening is the SEA.
Just on a side note, like, I remember being in high school and we had block scheduling, so we had A day and B day, and we had, uh, my class was the first class to actually go all four years with it, and we had to have, I think the requirement was twenty-seven credits, I mean, but if you went all eight classes all four years, you had thirty-two, but to hear that it dropped down to twenty-four and a half is kinda crazy, that's like six classes a day, just how times have changed. So we had uh NEA Lobby Day on January twenty-third, so we went up to Santa Fe, we were able to meet with John Arthur Smith and talk about the increase in salary, including uh an increase for our classified staff, which includes our um maintenance, IAs, um, some of our paraprofessionals within the classroom. One thing that was interesting was that one of the bills that is um going through the House and working through the House has an increase of salary for people in education, but at a cost of an added ten days extra of work, which isn't really a raise, if you think about it. There are a couple going through the House, we'll see what happens, again, we just have to wait um till the end of session to see what gets approved and what doesn't. During Lobby Day, we were also fortunate enough to actually have a meeting with Governor Muhan Grisham in the governor's room around that big fancy table, and it fits a lot of people, I'll tell you that. Yeah. We were able to share our stories with her and let her know, just from the various parts of where our NEA affiliates are, what's happening there, and of course, you know, trying to get sixty or seventy people to share a story, it was, you know, but she sat there patiently, engaged with us, and listened to the things that we had to say, so that was exciting, I'd never been in that room before, and when you see it on TV, it just does not do it justice. Um, locally, we've met with our Uniserve, Mr. Señez, um, to discuss the upcoming legislative information, and he shared that with us. Uh, he also included some information about um their new restraint laws that have been put into effect, and gave us a couple of printouts that um we'd like to share um via email with with you all. Um, we are having some upcoming visits at the end of this week, uh, Steve, uh, Mr. Señez, uh, and Brandon Watson from our NEA member benefits side will be here to share with uh members and others within our school communities about the benefits that um are available for members and could be available to potential members, and also to give them updates about what's going on in Santa Fe. We uh did send an email to Mr. Klauff, and our committees are set for bargaining and the calendar, so we look forward to getting that started soon. And I think that pretty much covers what we have going on right now, so, questions or comments?
Just about the calendar, did you say that you guys wanna be meeting soon for, is that for the annual calendar?
For the school year calendar, yes, the new, for nineteen-twenty.
Okay. I've had people ask me when they can expect.
Yeah, we, in the past, tried to get it out by April, but, you know, we have to make sure that CBA and those guidelines are being followed, and uh, there's several uh different um versions that come out, and it has to be voted on and things like that, but I know I myself am chomping at the bit to see when fall break will be, so.
I think that's what everybody wants to know.
Yeah, do some planning and, you know, just, everybody likes to know as soon as possible when all that will be done, so. But hopefully in the next cou- couple of weeks, week and a half or so, we'll get that set up and started.
Great.
I would I would say it's probably gonna be May at the earliest, just because of the proposed legislation, and then the time for the governor to act on it, and then the time for the proposed calendars to get out, once we know if the school days are gonna change, so.
Oh, 'cause the proposed legislation may change the number of school days?
Days.
It has to be done by budget time.
Huh?
It has to be done by our, but, 'cause we have to submit the calendars with our school budget.
I I guess I'm I'm not sure, but if the additional ten days were just staff or kids also?
Just staff.
Right.
And that particular bill.
Still out.
Um, one of them, and I can't remember which version that I read through, um, for some reason, some of the hours and things were struck out from it, and so it's, again, it's just one of those things, which one's gonna be approved in committee, which one's gonna get signed, or, you know, are they just gonna totally disregard them and, you know, not not do anything, is she gonna veto both of them, one of them, whichever one comes out on top, but it's just a waiting game, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is information to the board, and first up is our superintendent, Mr. Brown.
Not a problem. Mr. President, members of the board, uh, first on the agenda is the Hachita, the Mexico property. We did ask Mr. Barry Ward to take a drive down there and take some pictures and and get a a better idea of what the property looks like, if there's any buildings on it, utilities, et cetera, and he did provide the pictures, and I believe that you all have had an opportunity to see them. Um, we do have a person that is interested in in the property, and Ms. McCain has been in contact with this individual, and so I'll let her take it from here.
Um, yeah, the person that contacted us that actually pointed out the fact that we owned the property, um, is looking to purchase it, you know, I talked to her a little bit about, um, you know, what's going on in Hachita and stuff, and she said that she looked at another um property that actually had, 'cause this property has no water and no electricity going to it at all, and there was no sign of any kind of, you know, a well or anything like that, and she was looking at another piece of property that actually had a trailer and had electricity and water going to it. The property was going, it was, I think, a comparable size, and they were trying to sell it for twenty thousand dollars. Well, the bank wouldn't finance it because there's no resale value for it in that area. So, you know, something to be considered is...
Basically obsolete.
Right. And I mean, you, you've seen the pictures, it's a patch of weeds.
So I guess I kind of have a question. On the first picture, it's very clear. But on the second, not so much is it, is it only the highlighted green piece?
Well, it's, and the seven other lots next to it.
That way, okay.
Is that something, Mr. Potts? Do you have that picture that you can put up on the screen? So there's a highlight in the second picture, it's the highlighted lot.
I could have, the assessor gave me each page with another lot highlighted, I mean, so.
Oh, you, there was...
Because they were going for, you know, the, the valuation. I think if you look in the corner there, it gives you like the...
Actual value and primary taxable.
Right.
What's it say there? I can't.
A thousand and thirty-three thirty-three.
Per lot.
Primary taxable, which is usually pretty understated, but even at a thousand.
And is, is this person asked for us to, she's interested in purchasing it, or?
She's interested in purchasing. When I asked her how much she was willing to pay, she said how much she willing to sell it for, so. I didn't believe that came very long.
Best offer, O B O. And she's going to be the only.
That, that would be, I guess, maybe, would that be the appropriate responses?
What's your best offer?
What's, what's your best offer, and then it comes, it has to come to the board for either a yay or an A.
Well, we're voting on it today. Right?
Yeah, whether you will, because she wants to know whether we're willing to sell it, first of all. I mean, because she's going to stop calling if we're not interested in selling it. I mean, if we want to hold on to it for...
We don't know if we're interested until she tells us how much she wants to buy it for.
Right, exactly. I mean, so that, that would be another meeting in itself to determine, you know.
Interested for the right price. Yeah, but she won't give us a price, so.
Right now, it's not costing us anything to be there, you know, but by the same token, it's not doing anything for us either.
Right. And we have no, I mean, we don't want to go back to satellite schools, so. What are those pictures? It's, there's just mainly mobile homes on adjacent lots? Is that what we see there?
Um, yeah, that's what it looks like. Barry said that there wasn't a lot of...
Much of anything.
Yeah, there's not much of anything, but there's, there's not a lot of homes that are occupied down there.
Okay, mostly shacks.
Right.
Okay. And she didn't tell you what she wants to do with it?
She said she'd rather not say it when I asked.
Oh, my goodness. Well, then you know what's going to happen. There's going to be windmills on there.
I don't know if they're allowed that close to the road.
No, they're not. That's way too small.
Any other questions on, or comments on the Hachita lot? Very well, thank you.
And the next, just want to inform the board that on February fifth and sixth, myself, Mr. Clough, and every other administrator in the district except for one, attended a training for the First Annual New Mexico School Personnel Association, two thousand and nineteen conference, and it was a very valuable conference in which human resource information was shared, all, all various topics that were of interest, and it was highly, highly praised by every attendee that was there. And I knew several of the people that actually sponsored it and led the conference, and they're quality people, and they really, really put together a good program, and it's going to be continuing every year. And so I was impressed with the, the number of, of our administrators that chose to attend and the engagement that they actually had as well. And so we just wanted to inform you all that we did in fact attend that conference, and, and so it's not just our teaching staff, custodial staff, maintenance, I T. It is administrators as well that is achieving some and earning some professional development as well.
Questions from the board? Very well, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir.
Next on our agenda this evening, is that Mr. Clough? Are you, are you getting another bite to eat, or are you...
No, I'm up. I have two informational pieces. Yeah, for once, I do not have an action item on the board agenda for tonight, but there are two pieces of information I need to provide the board. Uh, one was regarding our community dialogue we held last Thursday. We had thirty-one active participants. Unfortunately, we were impacted quite a bit by the county commissioners' meeting that lasted for the marathon for the day. There are at least, we identified for sure seven, probably more like fifteen that were over there. We had fifty-eight respond saying they could come, but I have a feeling there's a few more over the, uh, over at the county commissioners' meeting than ours. But what we were able to do is break down into four subgroups to look at potential action items that we are going to, that we're going to generate in, in an April meeting. And I hope to come back to the board in May with the next steps of what we're going to do with career and technical education for our district. So that was on the twenty-first, and we're looking at holding it in early April before testing. So that was, even though we only had thirty-one there, we had quite a few people had representative for Department of Education come down. We actually had the Better City group from the city, Town of Silver City come in that was contracted that works on workforce development and economic development issues. They've been part of our process since the February meeting, uh, working on some common initiatives across. And as, as a follow-up to that meeting, I am informing the board that they have asked that the school district continue our community dialogues as part of the city's process, the town's process, in order to get stakeholder input, as well as identify critical areas for workforce development for next year as well. So we have agreed to do that, so this process will continue next year in cooperation with the Town of Silver City. We haven't worked out all the details yet, but we will have a, I call it a pseudo-task force of the university, the school district, and other entities from around the county and the city talking about workforce development needs for the region and try to tie into additional financial resources and economic development resources for the region. So they have been very impressed with the turnout we've had, and in the April meeting, we actually may have two members of the state cabinets from the Department of Labor and Department of Commerce attending the meeting as a result of the work that we've been doing. The other issue I'd like to bring to your attention is, as always, the legislative session going in. We're in the middle of a science adoption, but there are two pieces of legislation out there that could affect our timelines for the adoption. One of them being what's going to happen to our state test with regards to science and how that's going to align to the new science adoption, and the rule of the fifty-fifty, where fifty percent of our resources have to go towards state-approved curriculum. There's a bill out there that will remove that requirement and give local districts more control. With session ending on March sixteenth until April fifth, or whenever the date President McMillan came up with earlier that could, could sign legislation into effect, that could affect our timeline because we are supposed to get it done by April, May at the latest, so we make sure we have it purchased and ready for the next year. So there might need to be a consideration given to a special board meeting for the science adoption, depending on what comes out of Santa Fe with the legislative session. Just so you're aware, our board meeting is set for April fifteenth. Right now, our community input that is required by state law is scheduled for April first through eighth. But if that legislation does not get signed till April fifth on the last day, that pushes it in. We have to allow a seven-day period, whether that's school days or calendar days, I got to look deeper into it. That could take us right into the day of the April fifteenth board meeting. So I will keep you guys apprised of what's happening and we're doing it, but we've developed a timeline. We have a science committee for the district with teachers from every building involved in it. We had an organizational meeting today. Presentations are coming in for the next month. We're going to do our final review right now, scheduled for the last week of March, and try to get the community input for that first week of April, so we have time before. But until we know what comes out of Santa Fe, it's flexible. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
What do you mean about the fifty-fifty?
Right now, right now, the way the curriculum moves, we have to take fifty percent of the funding given us by the state and take state-approved curriculum that has been approved by PED, and then the other fifty percent is support materials. So we have to spend it equally. Seven, fifty percent on state-adopted curriculum that's gone through PED, and then fifty. We could do more, but the minimum's fifty-fifty with state-approved curriculum. If they do away with that, it gives us a lot more flexibility and allows us to purchase more support materials than what we do, but we have to have, we have to have district-adopted curriculum in those areas that align to the state test and the stand, the new age standards in science, the new STEM standards that are in our next-gen standards, as they call them. So it'll give us more flexibility. We're supporting that, allow us more control to do that because we have, like, our high school that's using Engage New York quite a bit with math and science that are online curriculums, and right now, that's covered, as Michelle and I talked about, is in our technology budget and not our curriculum budget for Twenty-Fourth Century. So if we would have to purchase those online resources, actually comes out of S B nine possibly, or is our technology budget sort of a lot in the operational. This would allow us to have more flexibility and be able to use online curriculum and resources for our students if they adopt the new rule.
Other questions? I've heard lots of good things about the community dialogue, including up in Santa Fe at the Grant County Day up there. Folks were mentioning how well that they thought that's, that's been, both for the community and, and for the district. And is there another, you say they want it continued. Do you have another date that that will...
Our final planning one for the district, for us to put our action plan for our current Tuck Ed program is going to be in early April. I'm going to send out the, uh, the poll to the attendees. We'd like to get it done by our testing window, which opens on April fifteenth, because I don't want to pull our administrators and teachers out during the testing blocks. So we're going to look at that first two weeks in April to get our action plan together. And then Priscilla Lucero from the COG is heavily involved in this. She's helped coordinate a lot of these services between all the government entities. She's looking at a timeframe for us to meet over the summer and organize some actions. Actually, those people will be back in town either in April or early May, so we can set up a timeline for next year, and I'll have more information at that point in time when we look at it. We're looking to try to do them quarterly, doing our own group meetings and then having a community meeting out to gather information with regards to needs. This is an all-encompassing type of activity that the city has embarked in, is looking at how they can support training, workforce development for, along with the county commissioners have been part of this too. Of how do we centralize all these operations into a way where can you leverage all the funds in the county instead of each one of us doing our own thing and doing our own silo? So that's part of the process that's going on with Better City, that group out of Utah that's helping with workforce and economic development and identifying projects. But one of the primary needs that came out of the initial discussions was preparing to workforce. And where's that linked to? Education, us and the university. So the university will be part of this process. They haven't identified the people from the university yet, but they figure we already got it in place. We'll bring it together or centralize and work with them closely to make sure we're getting the entities that need to be to discuss that. So the framework should be put in place sometime over the summer.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Very well, you may proceed to the buffet table if you would.
I got a doctor's appointment in the morning. I can't get any more away.
Thank you, Mr. Clough. Uh, next on our agenda this evening is Mrs. McCain, Director of Finance.
Hi, good evening. Well, I went through and was looking at the budget schedule that I, I kind of put together last year, and of course, it's going to be pretty much in the same timeline. It seems like we have a lot more irons in the fire this legislative session as far as, you know, things that are going to impact what we can do with our final budget or what will be, we will have to do with our final budget based on what comes out of that legislative session. They're going to finalize on March sixteenth, and then as Mr. McMillan said, it's going to go to the governor, so we may be waiting. Right now, you know, I've heard about the, um, the new minimum teacher salaries and, and stuff that is coming into play. What is also going to be a factor in the impacting the budget is going to be the changes in the funding formula, because in the past, they've looked at the levels of education as far as your, your degree status and your experience with, in teaching. And now they're moving towards the licensure levels because they want that to have a play in. They're phasing in, I think they have a four-year phase in for the levels to be considered more strongly and moving away from the T and E, the, the experience that teachers have. This upcoming budget season, they're, they're talking about the minimum salary increases. Well, the, what, the information that I saw, it looked like we had anywhere from nine thousand to eleven thousand dollar minimum salary, but it's going to be phased in through two thousand and twenty-two, so how they're going to phase that in and if they have a plan for beyond this year and funding. Because, yeah, we have a wonderful year this year, but next year, you know, I mean, are they going to be able to, to back up any increase? If they're going to make it a tier increase over the next few years so that it's going to be a four-year phase in, well, will we have four years' worth of increases in our budget to compensate for that or not? You know, so, I mean, they have to look at all of these things and think about that. And also with, as Ms. Bustillo's pointed out, you know, increasing the, the teacher's contract days, that's going to impact also how much of an increase that they're actually going to see, because if they're working more days, it's not really an increase. Another thing that's sitting out there that's going to have an impact is they are looking at the minimum wage. And I was talking to Kathy Lemke, our payroll person, and right now, they're looking at going from our seven fifty an hour to ten dollars, which would be pretty stark. I mean, it would have an impact on our classified salaries. I believe all of our salaries are above the, well above the seven fifty, but to hit the ten-dollar minimum, you know, that would impact our cafeteria, our custodial and maintenance salary schedules. More than likely, our secretarial salary schedules as well, because, you know, those starting salaries are, you know, right now, more than the, the minimum wage requirements that are set in place right now. But with a ten-dollar increase, that could really make a huge difference on where we would sit, you know, as far as meeting the, the state requirements. And so that's another thing that we're going to have to look at. Of course, there was the community forum for the H B twenty, two twenty and two fifty-five and what the, you know, financial is, impact that would have on our community. You know, you hear both sides of the story, you know, coming from the mines and, and stuff and the panic that it set in the hearts of our community, because I went out to the community forum, you know, as a private citizen to see what was going on, and it was supposed to start at nine o'clock. I think I got there about eight-ten, and I got the last parking place in Ace, and it, the, the place was packed with people, and people who were very angry and upset about, you know, the, this impact to our economy, you know, or the potential impact to our economy. And so, you know, I see there are going to be strong feelings, you know, about that. And also, it's going to impact our schools, because, I mean, if we had an egress of jobs that, you know, moved out of the state, then we would have, obviously, you know, students that would go with it. And we already are suffering from a declining student population, so it could, you know, be to the detriment of our, you know, school system altogether in Grant County. You know, we could be looking at a Silver Cobra and Cliff School, you know, combined, which I think that would cause even more of an outrage than what was happening with the mines. Anyway, you know, once all of the, the dust settles and, and we know what's going to go on, because, you know, right now, it's a lot of back and forth, you know, between, you know, the House bills going through and what's going to happen with the Senate, and then what's going to finally happen with the governor and her approval. You know, until then, it's kind of hard to look at a budget. I mean, right now, we got our final adjusted unit value, which was a nice little increase. I think it was an additional increase of thirty-one dollars and change to the, the initial unit value that we were given for the seventeen-eighth school year. You know, so that's given us a little bump up in our final S E G to get us through this school year. But, you know, not knowing what, how that's, you know, what the, the final outcome is going to be with this legislative session, you know, we can't really say, are we going to have a wonderful year? Because if they impose so many, you know, requirements to this budget, I mean, what looks like it could be a wonderful flush year, and you keep hearing that there's so much more that's going to go for education, but if they mandate every penny of it, then there's not going to be the flexibility that people think that we're going to have, you know, with, oh, we have this, you know, budget increase. But if there's strings attached to everything, there's not going to be a lot of flexibility to look at, you know, different programs or different ways of spending that money that we do get. You know, so we have to keep an open mind and, and just kind of wait for it to get to the finish line and not get, anticipate too much. Anyway, so we'll go through the end of this year and, I mean, the, the end of this month and go into March and kind of look for, you know, what's going, what's going on in the community, and we'll start meeting. Um, we're going to have a staffing meeting um, coming up in March to look at, you know, where we sit as far as. You know, I have the fortieth day and eightieth day stu- student numbers that I um, got from our Stars person. And our on our fortieth day, the membership was two thousand four hundred and forty-eight students um, district wide. And eightieth day, it was two thousand four hundred and fifty-five. You know, I don't have a feel for, you know, where we sit right now, you know, is it going to continue to increase a little bit? Or, you know, just where we'll be. But that's going to impact, of course, you know, whatever our unit value is, we're going to, you know, our population is going to um, be a factor in how much more or less we're going to be working with next year. And then um, we'll have to look at those things in order to start building the budget. It's, you know, a little premature to start looking at a budget when we don't have a unit valuing and we really don't know what our student numbers are going to be. Mr. Clough has been working with the local um. Businesses and stuff as far as getting a feel for what's going on in our local economy and everything. You know, like I said, we're looking at the state and it's looking wonderful. We're hearing we're flush. It's a wonderful year. You know, how long can that, you know, perpetuate itself? I mean, because, you know, they're talking about gas taxes, you know, well, if we're doing so well, why are we going to, you know, raise taxes on something that is already benefiting us? You know, and what's the the impact of that? So, I mean, there are just a lot of factors that we have to look at and then we have to look at, you know, costs, you know? One of the great things that we heard was, you know, Barry talked about his deal with P and M and all of the retrofitting of the LED lights. We should see some savings, but we don't know what it's going to be, so it's kind of hard to budget for those savings. Until we've seen a full cycle of um, electrical um, electricity bills and stuff like that over, you know, with the new retro, the new um, LED lights to say, we're going to be saving, you know, twenty, thirty percent of what we were paying before. And then um, you know, again, the staffing and the student population, we have to look at, you know, where we, you know, we may have an increase in needed teachers. I know that um, with the pre-K um, program, we have had so many students just coming in. I mean, we were initially concerned that we weren't going to have enough. And then with each um, child find, we're finding more and more students that are are eligible for our program. So now we're starting to worry about, are we going to be able to house all of those kids, you know? I mean, so if that may be, you know, a blessing, you know, or a curse depending on. Run out of room, you know? But I mean, uh, for each one of the things that we've done, you know, um, like the pre-K program. We had funding for the pre-K program. We had, you know, fortunately a facility for them with the O H S building. But what we didn't anticipate was all of the requirements that those grants were going to have that they didn't cover financially. You know, because we were required to have um, the special ed students as well as the regular ed students in the same um. To to be serviced with with the, you know, together in that same um, the pre-K um, building. But we cannot pay for the the um, special ed teachers out of the pre-K budget. So they have to be there. We have to have instructional assistance for them, but they're they're not funded in that pre-K grant. So for everything that we have funding for that we think, wow, yes, we got it covered, there's more money, you know? I mean, the playground that we put in up out there, you know, we thought, wow, you know, because I think a playground, I mean, you look at it, it doesn't. I mean, it's nice, but it doesn't look like, wow, you know? And then when you find out that you had to spend two hundred thousand dollars for it, it's like, whoa, you know? I mean, so there's a lot of things that you just don't account for that are, you know, come into play. And with the question about the SB nine, I mean, we really need to look at um, you know, because I I had panic in my heart when Albuquerque's SB nine bill did not pass. I was just like, oh my God, what are they going to do to maintain their facilities? Because I I mean, as you know, you look around our school district, most of our buildings are very, very old. They require lots of maintenance, you know, and that's what our SB nine budget is for. It doesn't pay salaries. It can't be used for bond projects. It can't be used for a lot of things. It's very restricted in its use. It's facilities and technology. And it's very um, limited in the technology, you know? I mean, it there's very strict guidelines that you have to stick to. You can't buy, you know, smaller supply items. You have to buy, you know, equipment. You have to buy, you know, you have to use it for renovations and and for maintaining the facilities. So you can't just go out and use it for something else. But if you take that out of the operational budget, that's a huge hit. I mean, if it didn't pass and you're looking at one point one million dollars that we used for, you know, maintaining the air conditioning, heating systems and making sure that we, you know, we have um, proper, you know, the parking lots, which are an ongoing project. I mean, it seems like as soon as we get one fixed, there's another one that needs work. And, you know, the um, Ben Altimirano, the fields, just a little bit to me of moving dirt around out there has cost so much money. And so we have to look at all of those things that if we don't have SB nine monies, that's going to hit our operational budget, you know? And that flush year can go down real quick, you know, if we don't aren't able to maintain the status quo as we are, we're looking at it right now. So anyway, just right now, we're in a hrip and wait situation. We have to kind of keep in mind all the things that we need and that are upcoming. But also keep in mind what the requirements are going to be with the monies that we do have. Because it's not generally just to give when that when they say that we have new money or additional money for education. It's here it is with all the strings attached, you know? And so that's how we go into this new budget year, just looking to, you know, hopefully improve on things in the classroom and in, you know, um, the curriculum. And also, you know, try to improve, you know, the our students' experience so that they enjoy and and benefit from every day in in um, silver schools without having to worry about how are we going to make budget through the end of the year. So that's where I come from on the the budget due date this year. I was initially given um, May the twentieth and he called me yet on Friday afternoon, right after I left because it was snowing. And so that's now May thirteenth, so May thirteenth is our budget due date with our budget analyst. We still have the final due date of June twentieth that the state imposes on us. But we have to meet our budget due date with our budget analyst first and foremost.
And that was May?
May thirteenth.
Thirteenth. When is our, when is our May meeting?
Uh, the twentieth. So we may have to move it up.
Yes.
But do you have to have it in on the thirteenth or could we approve it on the thirteenth? And you get it to him on the fourteenth?
It has to be approved by you to give it to him on the thirteenth.
So you need it approved?
Prior to.
April.
So we may have to move our April meeting till later.
I'll move our May meeting up or?
Yeah, it's.
You'd have special maybe for curriculum and budget.
Yeah, especially with the, you know, also with the concerns that Mr. Clough has with the curriculum. We're going to have to look at those dates and and there's going to be some.
Oh, we might need a special meeting.
Might need a special meeting for curriculum. We could do budget and curriculum on the same day.
When would, but I thought you said curriculum would be summer.
No, curriculum for us is the April fifth would be when the governor signs it. And then I have to get it to you by April so we make sure we can purchase everything by early May to get it here in August.
Okay, well, not having a board meeting on April fifteenth would be ideal.
This last year.
Yes, we did.
Or I should say, not we, but.
No, not we. You guys were good to me, though.
Um, questions or comments for Mrs. McCain on the budget plan? I do have a question for you, Mrs. McCain, on that. Um, the unit value has been set, right? Did they?
That the final unit value for two thousand seventeen eighteen is what we just got.
That's what.
In January, the third year, yes.
Seventeen eighteen like as in last year?
Last year.
Like for the budget that we just got to our cash carryover?
That we're living in now?
Is not.
The final unit value for it.
Right now, then, for eighteen nineteen?
Right.
Okay.
And Mrs. McCain, I was thinking, I was like, how can they set the unit value when legislation is potentially is going to change salaries?
We're still working on last year.
That was, that was a whole.
So eighteen nineteen is what we just got.
Twilight Zone.
So when I go to the spring budget, which is um, the last week of of March, they'll give us the unit value, which is a tentative number that we build our budget with, and then they finalize it.
During the year.
Yeah, and usually in January or February of the following year.
Brilliant.
Always moving parts.
Twilight Zone financing.
So is it true?
You always hope it's going to go up because it can go down.
There's also a proposition out there to have a, I saw a rural population rate versus.
They're looking at removing the small school funding and or reorganizing it. So I I'm not quite sure what they're doing with that.
That would be separate from the unit value?
Yes.
Okay, that that was.
But we do, are we are affected by that?
Right, because.
Yeah, sixth, eighth and twelfth are both affected by it.
Pick the dagger.
We have our student population and then they um, they have a a population, a formula that we formed that's the nine, ten, V five, which actually goes in and gives us weighted numbers for those students in the population, depending on whether they're sped, whether they're um, uh. The pre-K, the um, the special ed, the gifted, all of those things come into play so that we have a weighted number that they actually look at for our um, uh, unit, uh, our membership numbers. And then they take that times the unit value and that's how they figure what our S E G is.
So like for like probably a horrible example, but like sped might get one point five of S E G instead of just a regular one.
Right, right. And they look at, you know, it costs more to um, to to um, educate elementary students maybe than high school students, you know, and, you know? Or vice versa, I should say, I think this is what it is. Because you're looking at, you have one teacher in a classroom for your elementary students where you have multiple teachers in multiple classes for the secondary level. And so they're going to have a higher weight on on their numbers.
Very well. Any other questions on budget?
Clear as mud.
Thank you for that. And the next item you have is the audit report. I think is a little bit easier than the.
That's a special day when the audit's easier than the budget.
Yes.
Um, we had our audit um, released to us um, just this past month. I was um, happy to note that, you know, we had four findings last year that did were not repeated. So we we were learning from our mistakes. And then um, also with the two findings that we did have that remained in place, um, one of them was um, the calculation for our um. We have to have um, a pledging, you know, a collateralization of the funds that we keep in the banks. So because, you know, we have the FDIC insurance that covers a certain amount of money. Well, for public funds, you have to have a collateralization by the banks in order to say, if the banks went under today, you would lose everything that isn't covered by FDIC insurance because FDIC insurance covers what, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per person? Not per account, but per person. And so with um, public funds, you have to collateralize that. They have to invest money against your um, your account balances there with the bank so that they can say, we can cover you to this point. You know, which is much, a lot further, usually half of what you have beyond your two, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars initial coverage that FDIC insurance guarantees. Well, in the collateral, calculating the collateralization of our accounts, the way our auditor was doing it, he was looking at our accounts as being all the same. Well, the bank looks at them as separate. We have demand accounts and we have um, interest-bearing accounts. And so by nature of those two um, descriptions on our accounts, there we have additional to um, FDIC insurance. And so when Mr. Stone looked at it, he thought we were under collateralized by sixty-nine thousand. But when I was able to show him the calculations um, from our pledge analyst with First American Bank, they could show that we were over collateralized by seventy-one thousand, so that removed that finding. And then.
So is that still in the report, though?
Um, it was either if if we have the option to send the audit report back and start over and.
No.
Yeah, it's not that done the first time, so I did not want to repeat. So I was good with having.
Yeah, because if he understands and then next year he'll understand and then it won't be there.
Right.
Yeah, okay, good.
And then the other finding was an adjusting journal entry that was booked to cash instead of revenue in error. Once I, you know, found the 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 journal entry error, then I had it corrected. We sent the information to the PED. We had already filed our final cash report and so that's why it's um, an audit finding.
Okay.
But it was not anything messy or it's just a booking of transactions.
And I think I, I think we should really say it was no procurement code issues.
I know.
Which is awesome. Way to go, business office. That's really awesome.
And there's a lot of other fun stuff in that audit book that you guys can go through and look at.
Thank you for taking care of it. That's so cool.
And now it's, is it, it's public information, correct?
And um, you generally they give us like fifty copies of so of the audit book. Now they're doing everything electronically, so if anybody wants access to them, we can send them an electronic copy rather than wasting all those trees.
This is the whole report, though, in our board packet.
The whole report.
Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You may proceed to the dessert table now, Mrs. McCain. Next on our agenda this evening is Board of Education and first up is a finance subcommittee report.
Um, Mr. Khan and I met with Martha and Michelle on Friday, would have been, what, the twenty-second? Um, we discussed a few, I mean, there were some questions with some expenditures and some credit card charges and we got clarification on all of those. Um, and the rest of our um, time was spent discussing all the bars. Um, you'll see there's quite a few bars, which the best news of that is that we can now um, budget our cash carryover. Um, which will, this is hot off the press and I'll share it with you. Um, with the unit value adjustment and the cash carryover, we are sitting at five point one percent of our budget. So that's the best news.
What was that total cash carryover?
It's the one million two thousand six hundred and sixty-six.
Questions or comments or sorry, Mrs. Montenegro, are you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Questions or comments, Dr. Deuce?
No.
Thankfully you get on a positive note, Ms. Montenegro.
It's nice to have some good news, huh? Good financial news.
Next up is the threat assessment. And Mr. Flores sent me a text message that I'm going to have to look at. It's not that detailed, but uh. So Mr. Flores asked me to relay the information that uh, threat assessment did not meet this month, therefore nothing to report.
So they haven't met this year yet?
Yeah, I think they met last time.
In January, we did.
Yeah, he had a report in January.
Why did I think he said, well, we haven't met for the new year yet last year? Maybe that was the meeting.
Questions or comments that in?
I digress, okay.
Other questions or comments for Threat Assessment Committee?
No questions.
Very well. Next up on our agenda this evening is um, Board President. I've got uh, board goals that really were part of our um, work session last month. And I was hoping to try and formalize some of them a little bit more before tonight's meeting because I asked to put it on there for an action item as well. And if you look at our our work session for uh, board goals for the district, we have uh, four areas, academics, finance, extracurricular programs and the board. Under academics, we had discussed potentially identifying dual credit enrollment, uh, C T E program, graduation rates and attendance rates. And really, I don't have anything to add to the first two as a potential like uh, objective measure. Um, I think especially in and after our discussion today, we've got a lot of working parts that are looking at these areas. And I think uh, we're headed in the right direction as as far as those are concerned, especially on the C T E program. And so I don't have anything additional there. Under graduation rates, um, I looked at uh, our last report. Under graduation rates, um, I looked at, uh, our last report, uh, graduation rates. The state rate's seventy-one percent, uh, for New Mexico. For Cliff High School, they're at eighty-nine percent and Silver High School, we were at eighty-four percent. And so we're certainly above this, the state average and, um, I'm even looking at these thinking, you know, what, what would be a reasonable, you know, I don't know how much they fluctuate either, or how much they have fluctuated over the last couple of years or if we've stayed in this range, um, where we're at from this last, uh, period. But, uh, potentially looking at, you know, should we try and increase these by two percent each? So I'll take any comments or discussion on that particular item if anybody has any.
What I was trying to find was, um, the December meeting when the, when, um, the coaches presented to us on board goals, I didn't know if they mentioned anything that they thought was. Did they talk a lot at all about the graduation rate, what they thought was attainable or realistic for Silver Schools?
I don't know that they talked graduation rate. They talked, I think, reading and math, um, more so I think than graduation rates. Attendance rate, and I don't have, uh, what that, what that rate is now, but we had looked at, at that as well. Under finance, operational budget at eighty-five percent of staffing and I think in Mrs. McCain's handout, I think we're eighty-five to eighty-eight percent on operational budget versus, uh, salaries. Is it eighty-five to eighty-eight percent? Is that what your, your estimate is and which is down from where we were because I think we were seeing numbers that.
Near ninety, ninety-one percent when we were looking at the estimates last year. And my, um, calculation was we were at eighty-five, um, in December. So we're on point to be right where the state wants us to be, of the state average.
The other item we talked about was cash carryover between five and six percent. And, um, so we're right there now. Any comments on finance? On the extracurricular side, we talked about longevity. The issue I have with that is it's hard to quantify, I think. Some data for that unless, uh, certainly, I mean, we'll, we can take suggestions on whether it's longevity or some other measure that we can look at, but, um, any ideas there? On extracurricular programs? And then the last item was the board itself. Uh, we talked about the state requires fi- five continuing education credits. We've talked about bumping that up to eight. We also talked a little bit about aligning our board policies and board community relations. So I don't have any additional information on those. I think, uh, certainly trying to require a little bit more than what the state minimum in, minimum is for continuing education. Looks good, sometimes the practicality of that is a little bit difficult. Even though the School Boards Association offers, uh, some, offers meetings throughout the year. One thing that I've, that I did not do, that I was wanting to do was see if the online webinars are still available because that was really a nice way for, um, me as a, a new board member to get some of that education. And I don't, that was only for the new school members.
Actually he let anyone do it because you could take home books for other people.
Well, I asked and I was just, what I understood it was just for new school members because I wanted to continue something that I didn't catch.
Right, like a few chapters.
The timing was interesting.
It's so, yeah, they polled people and they were doing them like at four on Thursday.
I just was wondering if there is an alternative where you can go do it on your own. So say you were doing something at midnight one night and, you know, where you could go do it on your own.
So I think they're, I think they're, they're recorded, but you only get credit if you do it live. Yeah.
I, yeah, well, that's a separate conversation.
Well, that's, I would, I would throw it out there to the board, to administration. If they have any ideas, any comments, I think we need to kind of look at these a little bit more to maybe solidify something to vote on.
I'll be honest, I'm struggling to do the five because of the timing and things. And that's just the honest truth, so to say eight is.
How many do we get at a region meeting? Is it only two?
It's two, I think.
It's only two?
Six days.
Depends on how many classes you go to. When you go to the new training, it's usually five classes. But that's only once every four year.
The law conference will get what?
However many classes you go to. Are you going to go, Andrew?
So that's, that's where I am. I didn't get very far on the board goals. I was hoping, like I said, I was hoping to have some, a little bit more objective measures that we could add to each of those and vote on it tonight. I didn't get that done, so I apologize for that, but I opened it up to everybody to, to help me identify some. Or if you think of something, send me an email, shoot me a text. We can probably need to address it in a work session, a little follow-up in a work session and then try and take formal action on something.
Where is that in our?
From last month. Um, so next up under Board President, we've got the twenty nineteen N M S B A School Board Association Student Achievement Award and the Excellence in Student Achievement Award. And I've got, uh, the application packet. Uh, I'll just kind of discuss that briefly. It's, uh, guidelines for the award. The award is sponsored by the N M S B A and is presented on behalf of the N M S B A by each local school board in New Mexico. The award will have the N M S B A name and logo engraved on it along with the name of the award. One award per district will be purchased by the N M S B A and will be sent to the district for presentation. Uh, criteria of the award, each district's local board will choose the recipient through an open nomination process. The process for selection will be at the discretion of the local Board of Education. Uh, the recipient is an individual or group that must have played an important role in improving student achievement at the district level. Recipients may include school board member, administrator, teacher, staff member, parent, community member or volunteer. Our timeline is, um, March twenty-second is the deadline for the local district to send the name of the award recipient to the School Board Association. And then the awards are in April. Or I guess, uh, awards are mailed to the participating districts in, in April, late April. So there's a nomination form here. I don't think this was part of the board packet, was it?
No, it wasn't. You want to make some comments, Mel?
I don't, I don't think so. It's just, it's a pretty simple, it's a pretty simple nomination form. And I think, um, kind of what we talked about a little bit at the agenda meeting was we would, we would accept nominations for this award and vote at our next board meeting, um, on the candidates that we received. That way we can meet the deadline. I think the deadline is the end of the week after our, our next board meeting in March.
Did we, did we set a date for nominations to get to us so we can get them in the board packets for us to review of the thirteenth? Linda, is that what we decided?
I'm sorry?
The thirteenth. Have the nominations get here by March thirteenth so we can get them in the board packet that week because the meeting would be on the eighteenth? Is that what we decided?
I think so.
I think so too.
You're right, you are right.
So we'll, uh, all nominations need to be in by the March thirteenth. And then we'll vote on nominees on, during our meeting, the eighteenth. Does that sound all right with everybody? So we'll be thinking of a nominee.
And you were going to put that out to your leadership team, right?
We have, we've received three responsibly because we've had a couple so far.
Wow, awesome.
Oh, they're already in here?
Yes.
Wow, who didn't do their homework?
So there's a few in our packet already, a few nominees to review. And I think what we'll do, if agreeable to the rest of the members, is we'll probably identify them, one, two, three, four, however many we get, or A, B, C, D and vote on, vote on them that way. Does that sound all right? And, and maybe for the next board packet as they come in, we can number them or you can label them, counted A, B, C.
Maybe this, these three could be one, two, three or A, B, C.
Something like that. Sounds good to me. Very well, next on our agenda is board comments and.
We're going to make them short.
I'll go first. Uh, wanted to, to mention that I attended the Prospectors Grant County Day in Santa Fe. I think it was, and Mr. Clef, Mr. Brown were both in attendance. I had not attended in about three or four years. I think it was four years since I'd last been up there for Grant County Day. It's a busy day, it's, but I think it's a fun day. It's, I think we, there's, there's a lot of opportunity for, for conversations amongst other community members. And I think that's really kind of the, the really neat thing to me about it. It's sure we have these kind of formal meetings with cabinet secretaries and we got her, got to visit with the Cabinet Secretary of Education, found out a little bit more about her and her, her husband actually are from the area to some degree and, and, uh, worked in the area. I mean, I think those meetings are important, kind of put a face to a name. But the good thing is she already knows who we are and where we are. So I thought that was a, a really neat, um, that she is the Cabinet Secretary of Education. But we also get to meet with, with other community members that at least I don't see very often. I see them in Santa Fe and so that's a, a pretty neat time, um, up there enjoying that. Prospectors always typically have it that first, uh, kind of towards the first of the session so we can get our, what we call our priorities out to the legislators and the state officials. I think the other reason is, um, there's not a whole lot out there at that time. Uh, I looked last night, there is just under sixteen hundred bills, memorials and resolutions that have been introduced. We're halfway through the session now, so no, nothing else can be introduced. But then they do this thing that I think they call it a dummy bill. So they introduce a bill with a dummy name. So if something comes up between now and the end of the session that they want to address, they can address it using, using that method. But six, just about sixteen hundred bills. Some of them, of course, very controversial, some of them would have a huge impact on our community. My hope is that everybody gets out their advocates for their issues that they believe are important and hope and pray that the legislative, legislative process does what it's supposed to do and that's negotiate and compromise on, on all these bills that are out there. I looked at just public education, a hundred and sixty-one bills in public, public education. And just to try and keep up with those is, is near impossible. So, um, I said it was a great, a great time up there with the Grant County Day. I would invite members of the board, if you're able to go up there, I think it's a great time, it's a great experience. And I know that, uh, there's a lot going on right now and a lot in the mix as we've heard through, especially budget. But, uh, kind of keep your, your ear to the, to the ground and your eye on the webcast and, uh, yeah, let our voice be heard as these things progress through the legislative process. Back here at home, uh, we just finished up with some of our winter sports, wrestling, uh, to comb the second place team title. So congratulations to them. I believe we had two, three individual champs, one of them who's a four-time individual champ, uh, Mr. Zeke Marquez. And I think that's the first for Silver City to have a, a four-time champ. So kudos to our wrestling team. Who else did we have? Basketball has got district tournament championships coming up this Saturday. I think that's twelve and two, uh, from what I've heard for that. And I'll cut it off now because I've talked too long and turn it over to, thank everybody for the work that you've been doing. I know, I know this, trying to keep up with everything has, has been tough. So thank you, Mr. Clef, Mrs. McCain, Mr. Potts, Mr. C P, Mrs. Hernandez, Mr. Brown. I will turn it over to Mrs. Montenegro.
Well, the good news is, is that Mike pretty much covered it all, right? He does an amazing job for us as board president and staying involved in public affairs and getting up to Santa Fe. And, and Mike does a really amazing job as board president. So I just, kudos to him because he, he, he's amazing. And I will echo, um, the congratulations to the wrestling team. But I, I also want to talk about, um, the uncertainty that's going on right now with all of those things that he talked about in public education. And, and our teachers are just doing an amazing job. And I know it's because of the leadership that we have in place, but to be able to go to a parent teacher conference and a teacher say, okay, there's going to be some changes, but it's still going to look like this and here's still the plan and here's a website that you can go and look at if you want to see a practice test. That's just so reassuring to parents, to kids, to our district. In a time of a lot of uncertainty, I feel like we have a lot of certainty. So thank you to the leadership and take, thank you to the support and thank you for rolling with the punches. I mean, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of moving targets, um, a lot of moving pieces in our district that somehow we all come together as a team and we make it work. So Silver Schools is awesome. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Uh, I just, I just want to echo Mike, uh, Mike's comment about Cabinet Secretary of Education was once her student. I'm not going to say how many years ago because then she'll probably get mad. I was her student, but, um, that being said, I got the opportunity of meeting Congresswoman Sochi Torres-Moore also last Thursday as you guys were at the conference center. I was at another board meeting where she was our distinguished, uh, distinguished guest. I did invite her to come, you know, sometime throughout her trip to come and visit our schools and hopefully talk to the high school or one of our schools and, um, probably advocate to, to, to young women out there that want to be politicians. Went on to see some school projects, um, at Harrison, the bathrooms, they look wonderful. If you haven't had a chance to stop, it's, they're beautiful. The gym's coming along, along pretty good, um, long day some little time, so. With my language is literally just on a very long day. Passed by growing tree, I haven't had the opportunity to stop and then see, but as I pass it, it looks like that's coming on pretty good. Just curious to see what the outgoing legislation is, you know, big old question mark, see what the impact is to our district with that. And then just, you know, congratulating the, our end of spring, winter, spring sports and softball team. I know Coach Turner will make us proud again if they can, any of our other sports. Um, other than that, that's, that's it. Just thanks to all our teachers and administration for staying, hanging in there. Just wait to see what falls out.
Thank you, Mr. Khan, uh, Dr. Diaz.
Uh, just want to say congratulations to the winter sports, wrestling team. How did chess do? I saw they're, they're in Science Olympiad, right?
Science Olympiad actually have quite a few.
So congratulations, yeah, so congratulations to those groups. And then I also saw that, um, the other thing was the Cyber Patriots, they did gold tier one.
They did do that, I hear you did.
So, yeah, so definitely kudos to a lot of different clubs, so. So, yeah, so definitely kudos to a lot of different clubs, uh, groups, and all working hard. I appreciate that. And I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Coker. Sometimes he ends up in the line of fire. But I think it was a really productive conversation for him to put it out there and just be open to a little bit of brainstorming is always really much appreciated. Definitely by me as a board member and parent. And so I just wanted to say thank you, 'cause I think, you know, sometimes it's, okay. So definitely there. And I wanted to say good luck. Definitely basketball's coming around. They have the district championships coming up. And so that's gonna be an up and coming, and good luck to the spring sports and activities. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the educators for their positivity. I've just seen a lot of innovative work. And, and that means teachers, you know, from the high school level all the way extending down to the elementary, I've just seen them really, you know, I'm seeing a lot of that integration where there are kids at different levels and they're tag teaming between grades, they're tag teaming within their classrooms. And so I'm seeing a lot of that growth and I, I'm witnessing it firsthand. And so I just, I wanna say thank you to our educators out there. They're doing a great job and supporting staff, and we'll keep moving forward.
I just wanna thank Mr. Brown for advocating for our district on going and speaking on the behalf of the county commissioners on HB two fifty-five. He did an awesome job on talking on the district's behalf of that would, would pass. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up on our agenda this evening is open public comment. Mrs. Hernandez, do you have anybody that submitted an open public comment request?
No, we don't.
Very well. Next up on our agenda is action items. And first up is our consent agenda. One, budget finance purchasing. A, financial reports. B, budget adjustment requests. And D, donations. Mrs. McCain, I'll turn that over to you, the four over to you for those.
Okay. I am asking for approval tonight on checks written for the month of January in the amount of two million, nine hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. The big thing on the agenda is all of our bars. I'm asking for approval of our bars. We have our bar for operational, the final adjusted increased unit value for eighteen nineteen, which it went up thirty-one dollars and change, so that we've got an increase of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars going into our operational budget. Our cash carryover from last fiscal year. Part of that, the large amount was also an adjustment, the final adjustment that we saw, I think in June of last year, when they gave us like a hundred and seventy-four thousand on top of everything else that was an adjustment to our S E G. Making our cash a million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars that we're asking for carryover. Our transportation budget. The transportation budget is, the requirement of the transportation budget is that anything that you don't spend, you have to give half back. And so that's why we have eighteen dollars to budget in, because we try to spend as much as we possibly can, so we don't give anything back. And we have our instructional materials budget. We have, are asking for approval of carryover of eighty-eight thousand and one dollars from our cash left over from last year, based on their final allocation, which we also get in June. And so we're unable to spend. Our food service budget, we're asking for a cash carryover of the forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars that was left at the end of last year. Our athletics, which is our gate receipts that are the revenues drawn by entry into all of our sports. We have, and that is for Cliff and Silverheim La Plata, a cash balance of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars to be carried over into this year. Our Medicaid budget is, we're asking for our cash carryover of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. That budget, what we're seeing there is the state has implemented a new reporting requirement that is an annual report. We've done quarterly reports that look at the services that we provide, ancillary services that we provide for the students. And we get an administrative claim that we get quarterly, while they have imposed, starting with the sixteen, seventeen-year cost report that's done at the end of the year. The first year that we did it, we received a little over four hundred thousand dollars in additional revenues from administrative costs and other considerations that they don't put into the administrative claim. That was something that was relatively new to us, and so we were a little terrified that they were gonna take it back, so we kinda didn't use it just to make sure that it was real. And then last year, I believe our, the costs in our report brought in another three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So it's real, it's ours, and so now, you know, we have that money, we're gonna budget it and use it. It is, got the restrictions of, you know, Medicaid funding, and so it has to be used for medical, you know, nursing and ancillary services. So we have a little bit of flexibility with that, and that helps us a lot with our I D A B budget, because we're able to pick up some of the costs that usually would hit our I D A B budget with our Medicaid budget, so that's kinda nice. Our bond building, we have our cash carryover from the first two allotments of our bond sale at the five million dollars apiece. And so right now we're asking for six million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars to be carried over in cash that, for our bond building. HB thirty-three, we have a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars that was left over that we are asking for cash carryover. Our SB nine is four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents. That will be split between maintenance and technology, according to what they had left over last year. We have our state match that we were unable to use last year. They have imposed new requirements on that. Before, we could use something that we had already paid for in the year that met the state mandates for SB nine purchasing. Like, we bought a bus, and so we were gonna use it. We had already paid for the bus. And usually they would let us go retro and, and exchange those funds for the funds that we had actually, had already expensed for those. New ruling is we have to use it on a purchase from the day they awarded it to us to the end of the fiscal year. And so we weren't able to do that, 'cause we got it in April. And so that carryover, along with this year's state match, we'll look at, right now Sandra's looking at purchasing a bus for Cliff, because their bus is about to be cycled out because of the state requirements. You can only use an activity bus for so many years. And so it's about to meet its age out, and so we're gonna replace Cliff's bus. And then our debt service is our, the funding that the state requires us to maintain so that we are able to make our bond payments each year. And we're carrying over the cash that will help us move into the next year to make our bond payments. And those are all of our bars that we are asking approval for. And then donations. I do not have.
Elks.
The Elks Lodge?
The Elks is on here.
Okay, we had a donation from that. I didn't get a copy of that.
It's two thousand for math department, Silverheim School.
All right, so that went directly to the high school, apparently, and I missed that one. But I'm asking for approval of the donation to the math department for, from the Elks Lodge as a donation. And I believe that is all on my action agenda, on the action items that I represent, that I seek approval on.
Questions, questions for Mrs. McCain.
I have two questions really quickly.
Go for it.
One, what is School Specialty of Chicago?
It is a school supply store.
Okay, and then the second, W N M U Early Childhood Program. Why are we paying them?
They had a workshop that a lot of our ancillary people attended.
Say no more. We're good. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Very well, I will entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda, items. A, financial reports. B, budget adjustment requests. And D, donations.
So moved. Second?
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Well, we're kinda still on financial. One of the things I forgot to mention was our capital outlay requests for the legislative session. Those requests were due Saturday for each legislator, and I don't have any other information on that. So moving on to our next item, do we have any transportation action items?
We have nothing tonight, President, so.
Thank you, Mr. Clef. Next on our agenda is item for action is item B, consideration or approval of a resolution and proclamation of special public school capital improvements tax election. And this is the resolution that we spoke about earlier on the phone with Mrs. Ives, I believe it was, with Cuddy McCarthy regarding SB nine. On your attachments, you'll see the resolution in the filing certificate. So we've got this for consideration. I was not aware of the options available in regards to the mail-in ballot versus the waiting until November. So thought out there for discussion amongst the board and administration on feelings on how we should address this. It sounds like we can hold off on this if we prefer to wait until November. If we do that, then we've only got one chance instead of two chances. Mrs., yes, Mrs. McCain?
Well, that's only if HB four oh seven passes. If not, we'll still have to have a special election, but we're gonna have to rush through it then.
That's true. We would have to have, we would, it was in March, I believe. Is that correct? We would have to, no, it was April, because we would have to wait for legislation to, to be acted on.
Uh, May fifteenth would be the last day to adopt a resolution.
Which is the actual date of this election, if we do approve it today.
That's true. So thoughts on that? Potential expense of, what did she estimate about?
Twice what we normally pay.
And I think it's about sixteen thousand that we paid for the HB thirty-three election, somewhere about sixteen, eighteen thousand.
About thirty-two.
So.
Potentially thirty-two. Is this, this is new, I'm guessing?
No.
Mail-in?
Well, the, the mail-in is new because they moved the election date to November. Usually it expires, and we have the February election and everything's fine.
With school board members and...
Right, but because this was the year that they invoked the new election date, moved it to November.
So now they're mailing it.
That's the only, anybody who's expiring this year to make the decision to hope for November or be, in my opinion, proactive and go after the special election.
And we're getting money through this year, it just affects the fall.
Yeah, we're good for this year that we're in. Next year, if we don't have the election or if it's not approved, then we would have, we would be...
If we wait, we're playing a little Russian roulette.
Right.
Well, and even so, even if this fails, then that gives us like the indication, like hello, we've gotta get out and get the word across and let everyone know just how much money.
No taxing.
No taxing fees. What was really interesting to me that she's like, you can't tell them how to vote. They used to have billboard signs. Yes! I'm like, okay, this is getting a little ridiculous.
We could say check the box and put a Y. Smiley face.
It may, I'd say maybe something, just play on words, support.
Support.
Support SB nine.
Vote yes.
As opposed to vote yes for SB nine. But my, my first thought was, let's, let's wait until November. We can, because even if that legislation doesn't pass, we would just have to have a meeting to call the resolution to have the election again in, in November, right? That's the way I understood it. If, if the legislation passes, then it's an, I guess, a given?
If the ele, if the legislation doesn't pass, then we have to have the emergency special election. If it passes, then we get to vote in November with the regular election. But that's hoping that...
It passes.
Then in November, it has to pass.
'Cause we don't have time to do another.
Then, you know, we'll be out that funding for the F Y nineteen, twenty fiscal year.
So right now, the, I guess the gamble is, in a sense, on the cost of the...
Right.
Yeah.
The election of twenty to thirty thousand?
We won't have this problem again in the future, 'cause it'll be a line.
Right, this is the culmination of the changing election laws.
Oh, so like in two years or whatever?
Everything will expire and be voted in in November.
It'll be fine.
This is the, the bum.
This is the growing pain.
Yes.
With an extra thirty-six thousand dollar price tag tacked on.
Plus, there's a new election fee that the state has imposed that's based on your budget. And ours was six thousand dollars right off the bat, 'cause it's so many dollars per hundred thousand dollars of budget. And so...
Who could sell me?
Do January thirty-first, the state of New Mexico got six thousand dollars from us.
So we already paid that?
Yes.
As a just in case?
You know, when they said that it doesn't cost you anything for that election in November?
'Cause you already paid it!
Because now they have a fee.
Now it's a fee?
Yes.
So...
I'm ready to vote.
I, I would just, I, I worry about waiting until November, only because there have been other issues that have been out in the community, and unless it's marketed very clearly, people don't realize it. Unless they know there's not a tax increase, it's exactly what you've been paying, you know, it doesn't change a thing, and it's...
And we're transparent with how it's spent.
We're transparent with how it's spent. I, I mean, the risk is there and has occurred where it's not gonna be approved. And at least that gives us a chance, like you said, to kind of get out there and really work, and really let people know what's going on.
Yeah, 'cause we're gonna have to be, be able to, to show the distinction between the bond funds that are used for those bond projects that cannot be used for regular day-to-day maintenance and the technology for the district. Those have to be used, 'cause they're gonna say, wow, you guys are flush. You have five more million dollars, and you have another five million dollars next year. Can't use them the same way.
Well, it's so hard for people to understand.
Yes, and so that's what we're gonna have to do, is, is really get that information out there and make them understand. Right now, you know, that the SB nine, it's maintaining our taxes the way they are in order to maintain the buildings that, which we have in this district, which are old and require lots of maintenance, lots of upkeep, you know, and so...
Can you get a quote from Michelle, Tim? What she said?
And that's a little, that's a, I guess, a concern on my part, because if we vote to, to do this, this by mail in May... Check my timeline here.
Yeah, May fifteenth.
Mm-hmm, uh, actually, timeline says May fourteenth, Tuesday, for the mail-in. We, we are, I kinda feel kinda crunched for time to, to really get the word out, because just...
Then we've already paid the six grand for the November one.
But, and that's for...
That's already paid.
Yeah. We'll have to come up with another twenty to thirty.
We don't for the November one.
And if four oh seven doesn't pass, we'll even have even less time to get the word out.
Yeah, that's true.
Because we'll be scrambling to get that election done.
So can you use the funds to pay for the election or no?
No.
That's a good question.
Facilities.
And as far as promotion of the election, that probably operational as well?
Everything.
But, I mean, if, if we don't, if it doesn't pass, then we have to pay all of those out of operational regardless.
And the maintenance of the buildings.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just seems like we're playing with fire.
Since July to November, your, all your technology budget and all your maintenance costs are coming out of your operational budget.
Yeah.
Which, you know, it's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in software.
Well, that seems like a win-win.
No problem.
So the timeline, if we approve tonight, then publications go in tomorrow with more publications in March. March eleventh, the deadline for the clerk to transmit ballots would be March thirtieth. And then it's, actually, it's not until April sixteenth, the clerk sends each registered voter a ballot.
I can count this.
Worth the election day.
Then you're mourning the run. Drop all your flits off as you go, Michelle.
People are home then.
Stick them on their cars as you're running back.
Stick them on their cars as you're running back.
Dr. Diaz, is that a motion to approve?
I, I move to the special election.
I will second.
Would say, uh, motion, so is that a motion to approve item B, consideration of approval of the resolution and proclamation of the special public school capital improvements tax election?
Correct. So moved.
So moved. And.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? I, I would, uh, agree that we probably need to, as a board, as administration, try and get the word out about what this entails and ask for support from our community to, uh, again, it's not an increase. This is just a continuation. To support our local schools.
And it is different from the money we can use for the bonds. For the, we use this entirely for the maintenance of our, our school. So I was, I was kidding, but I wasn't really kidding. Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Any other discussion?
Thanks.
All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you very much.
Proceed.
Um, next is item C, consideration of approval of resolution authorizing and directing special election procedures. Is that, uh, something different than?
No, it's part of it. It's part of C.
Part of, part of, uh, part of B as well?
Yes.
Should we, uh, entertain a motion to approve?
Yes.
That as well?
So moved.
All right.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Then next on our agenda for action is item D, consideration and approval of amended permanent cash transfer for twenty eighteen nineteen school year.
That is a repeat of last month's, um, cash transfer. Basically, um, what occurred was I submitted the, the transfer that we approved in, um, in the meeting. And, uh, according to, um, Mr. Craig, who is the CFO at the head, all cash transfer, all cash transfers have to flow through the operational account. So basically, we're doing the same thing with an addition, additional step in that it has to go from the SB nine budget to the operational budget, out of the operational budget to the, I mean, from the HB thirty-three, um, to operational, out of operational to SB nine. It's the same net effect, but it has to flow through operational, according to the public.
So we're moving money from SB nine to HB thirty-three?
It was a correcting entry. It was, uh, um, revenue that we received on a parking lot, um, project that Barry had. We had originally receipted it in, um, HB thirty-three. We found out that, um, when I was finalizing the books, that we had, um, actually paid for it out of SB nine. And so we were reimbursing that fund, um, making the correction. I was moving it straight from HB thirty-three to SB nine, but it has to go through the operational account. It ends up in the same place, but it has, we have to have that step in or they won't approve it at the head level.
That's interesting.
And that's what you indicated on your attachment here, the, from fund thirty-one six hundred to eleven, eleven thousand sixteen, uh, the amount is sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one. And then from eleven thousand to thirty-one seven oh one, same amount, sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Right. Flowing through the operational budget.
I approve that mail-in.
Questions? Is that a motion, Dr. Diaz?
A motion, please.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on our item D? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Um, item E is consideration of approval of adoption of board goals. And as I mentioned before, uh, when we had discussion about board goals, I don't think we're prepared to take action on them. So I would move that we table that item for a future meeting.
Second?
All those, so we've got a motion to table and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, so that item is labeled. Thank you. Um, next on our agenda for action is item F, consideration and approval of the sale of Hachita, New Mexico property. And just to clarify, I believe this is just action to, um, I guess, engage in the opportunity to sell the property.
Right.
And not necessarily.
Because I believe it'll have to go through the auction process because that is the, um, the process for any, disposable of any school properties is it has to go on the auction. So.
That's gonna be interesting.
Yeah.
We will get the best.
A one-person auction, but.
Is there a?
If she's game, we're game.
Yeah.
It just gives us the option. Doesn't commit us to anything.
That's my understanding. This action will just, uh, give us the option to entertain sale of the property. Doesn't necessarily, doesn't grant the, the sale of the property already, just.
So we should just make sure we word it that way. So consideration, I move to consider, uh,
Sale.
Sale of Hachita, New Mexico property.
Right.
Second? Got a motion and a second on, uh, appro- a consideration and approval of the sale of the, or approval of the sale of the Hachita property.
I guess just to be formally, uh, we just want to say consideration of the sale, right?
Consideration?
Because we don't really want to say approval yet.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So, Dr. Diaz, would you state your?
I make a motion that we, uh, uh, approve consideration of the sale of Hachita, New Mexico property.
Yes.
Striking approval from that line.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion on the item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda is future meetings and proposed agenda items. Our next work session and regular board meeting is scheduled for March eighteenth. Um, does anybody have any conflicts with that date?
No. That's the Monday right after.
It's the Monday after spring break. I think that worked for everybody. Um, then when the, next is the school law conference in June, uh, in Albuquerque. And, uh, the leadership retreat in July in Rito, so. Next on our agenda is open public comments. Do we have any requests for public comment?
No, sir.
Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is executive session. The mo- the board may elect to go into executive session for reasons permitted in the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, uh, N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one, H one three nine. Um, A, limited personnel matters as permitted under section ten dash one dash, dash fifteen dash one, H two, specifically so that, one, the superintendent can update the board and legal counsel can advise regarding the investigation of certified employees by the superintendent, remedial compensatory efforts related to the same and specific employee movements. Mr. Brown, would you care to go to executive session?
Yes, sir.
Very well. We need to have, uh, Mrs. Hernandez remind me, a roll call for, uh, to go into executive.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter.
All right, the time is nine thirty-two.
I'll vote to go in. I'll vote.
Okay.
I made a motion to go into post.
A second. And a second.
In the time?
Nine thirty-three.
Okay.